You're up.
All right. Bring this over. Okay. Would like to call to order the February 23rd, 2021 Columbia Borough Council regular meeting. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Link?
Here.
Councilperson Kaufman?
Here.
Councilperson Gerald?
Here.
Councilperson Stevens?
Here.
Councilperson Whitner?
Here.
Councilperson Bergard?
Here.
And her boss?
Here.
All right. We're having one from the ministerial, so please rush for a little stop. And Mayor, would you like to lead us in a pledge, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Announcement of executive and information sessions this evening, February 23rd, 2021. Council held an information session at 6:30 PM to receive information only items from the manager and the listener. All right. Does anyone have any additions to relation to reorganization of the agenda? I, well, I first would like to remove item 10C, which is the authorization to hire a new patrol officer. Anything else? All right. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item 10C? And a second?
Second.
The motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stevens, to approve the agenda with item 10C removed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any more opposed? Citizen comment, non-agenda items only. Do you have anything? All right.
Careful, take this mask off.
No, that's fine.
Had to run all the way home to get it. I forgot it. I got it. I didn't get a chance to get into the other meetings, but I heard there was a lot of problems with the snow being put on the payments. I have that problem every year. This year, the snow was a little worse than what it was previous years. If we get a harsh snow, I think the borough will know what it's like to push snow. But if they would just slow down. They gotta be in a hurry to go wherever they're going. If they slow down, it went with it on the payments. The one guy run the snow blower three times because the borough put the snow back on to the payments. Now, talk about the arnold pipe and purpose lane. Some of the other people complained to me, but I said, hey, come to the meeting, complain down here. So, got that off my, my plate. And I'm here also for a follow-up from the Harv Board meeting. I'd like to know how that get onto the agenda if it run out for the apartment complex down on Locust Street.
Well, I'll just answer this quickly, Frank. If you want to talk more, we can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Apologies. They, they have an active permit. They're, they are allowed to come. They, they got a conditional approval at the previous Harv meeting, and they had to come back and meet those final conditions. So, all they were doing is coming back to get the final conditions met. They already have a building permit. They've had a earth disturbance and a foundation permit for a while. So, they're, they're actively in construction. So, the permit is not dead. The project is not dead. It's still an active project.
Nobody could get me when they filled their permit out. Nobody could find it nowhere.
Okay.
And it's well expired. I'm not talking about the Harv. I'm talking about the zoning permit when it first was approved to do the building.
Frank, the zoning permit doesn't have it, it's, it's not-
Could you take the mask?
It's not under the purview of Harv. That's, zoning is separate from Harv.
They started-
But, but, but. When you start the process, you go to the borough, you start through zoning. Bring all your plans and everything.
Correct.
The Harv is down the road. So, this permit run out and-
No, because they, they pulled a permit. They pulled a building permit to start work, which, which then locks in their approval.
Two years.
Right. Right. So, their, their timing on the building permit is okay.
How many years has it been?
I'll, I'll go back and look at the dates. I don't want to misquote it. But the timing on their permits are okay. They, they started work. They had an inspection. Their permits are still active. Everything is okay. There, there's nothing illegal in there.
Nobody could produce that at the meeting.
Okay. Well, probably because at the meeting, they didn't have all that stuff with them, but we, we have it.
Well, somebody had a packet like that there, and they were looking for it, but, and I understand trying to find something, you know, in the spur of the moment, but I would appreciate if you could show me when the permit was first taken out.
So, if you went on schedule time, I'll, I'll be glad to go through with you, Frank. Because we, we were very concerned about this all the way through the process, and we want to make sure this is all done right.
I'll call you.
So, just call me sometime. Glad to walk through with you.
I'll call you.
Thanks, Frank.
Also, in my packet, I got nothing on the applicants tonight here. I got no information whatsoever. And anything that you're gonna-
It was posted yesterday, Frank.
Okay.
And that was my fault, because I didn't think ahead. I should have put the deadline to be prior to the packet assembly, and I didn't do that. That was my oversight. So, as soon as the deadline yesterday, I sent everything. We posted it last, yesterday afternoon.
Well, we're supposed to have anything, that you're going to vote on. We should have that in our hand. So, I'll go to my next, I'll go to my next issue. Mark, if I can go to Mark. Mark said in the minutes, that he said of a change in the quick tickets and a recent appeal that was conducted. Could you give me some information on those two items?
Can you say them again, please?
There, there was a, there was a change in, in the quick ticket. In, in what, what you were doing. You said you had made a change. According to the minutes, according to what I read in your minutes, there was a change made in the quick ticket. I don't know what it was, but it said you also had a, an appeal that went good. I see nothing nowhere in the public, for a public meeting or anything on the appeal.
The, the appeal isn't a public meeting. It's, it's an applicant coming in challenging a, a quick ticket, or quick tickets plural. Well, the change that we made, Frank, was that we, instead of me being the, the judge and jury for quick tickets, which is, I'll, I'll say technically legal, but probably not good practice. What we put in place, ah, help me, guys. Is that back, end of November, I think it was-ish? That it would no longer simply be me hearing the quick ticket appeals, but it would be a, I'll, I'll say an appeals board. So, the board is now made up of councilperson Bergard and councilperson Kaufman. And the three of us sat and heard the appeal of this applicant, which is not a form of the board, so it's not a public meeting. And we went through the process. So, that's what you heard about. That's, that's a, a resident comes in and says, hey, I got, I got a quick ticket. It could be a $500 ticket, a $25 ticket, whatever. And now it goes to a board of three of us to hear their case. So, it's not me simply hearing it by myself, but we have three of us hearing it.
I understand. And I brought it up when, just the borough manager. It might have been a previous borough manager that was in charge of that too, because you are the code officer's boss, which indirectly, council is the same way. So, there's still a conflict of interest with the council. So, I still have a problem with that. But run me through this. If I, I have a quick ticket-
Yeah, we are, we're over time.
What's that?
We're over the five-minute time.
What? Well, your five-minute rule sucks.
It's five minutes. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, this is a, a comment period, Frank. It's not a question and answer.
Yep.
These are all things that could, that you could make appointment and come in and talk to the manager about and get the answers.
How do you get to the bottom there? Five minutes.
Minutes for approval. Do I have a motion to approve the borough council meeting minutes for February 9th, 2021? And a second? The motion by councilperson Bergard, the second by councilperson Kaufman, to approve the borough council meeting minutes for February 9th, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right. No presentations? Mayor loss?
No comment at this time.
No comment at this time?
I think Chief's on the line, is he?
No, he's not on the line. No one's on the line.
I thought he was.
I thought he was going to be coming, because he asked me for the-
He says he's still on hold. He's trying to get in.
I hope I said him the right.
Yeah, I'm going to check online.
Thing.
Because Amanda can't get in either. Let me resend this to him.
Yeah, I was just doing that too.
You got it? Let me do it.
I got it.
Okay.
All right. We're circling around.
Is he in?
No, no one's in yet.
Did you call in the right one? Can you dial in?
I think so.
Why are we waiting on?
We have the, um, the online connection for, for the chief to dial in and some others. So, we're just trying to make, we're good.
All right. I didn't hear.
That's right, Frank. Who's that?
I ended it. I'm going to try and join the right, I'm going to make sure I'm in the right meeting.
So, I get my five minutes sorted with them.
Oh, yeah, they're in now. That's probably my fault.
Sorry, Katie. Tech difficulties. It was our way of wanting to see you. We missed you.
Please enter your access code. To enable audio control.
Amanda's in.
There you go.
All right. Hi, Amanda. I know you're all here, but thank you for joining. You're very welcome. Sorry about that sometimes, but I must have screwed it up. All right. Chief, we're up to you. Is there anything we would like to ask?
I guess the only thing I did want to say or mention is our gratitude to the residents who located their vehicles during the storm emergency. Unfortunately, there was a need to issue citations. We issued about 26 this last time. So, for those who, you know, are not complying, they could just make a greater effort to do so. And that will help with the cleanup, of course. Thank you.
No problem. Yeah, it definitely benefits the residents, because then you can plow curb to curb, and, you know, then they don't have to shovel, so.
Thank you.
I think today was evidence, or yesterday was evidence of that?
Yep. All right. The next item, we are going to do the interviews for the borough council seat. Before us, we have Chris Vesania and what's your-
Peter Skoll.
Peter Skoll and Ryan Sexton. I didn't know which was it. Randy Fletcher has rescinded his letter. So, we have the three applicants. The way this is going to work is we each have a question. We may have more than one question. You'll each answer the same question, and we're altering who goes first, so.
Do we want to give them the microphone to pass between?
Yeah, we can.
It's on. Thanks, Chief. It's good, yeah.
Speak mostly to them.
With, with the mask?
Yep. All right. Which side do you want to start on?
Me, me, me. Don't matter.
All right. We'll start with Howard. Your first question?
Okay. Looking through your, your paperwork, everybody pretty much is saying pretty much the same thing in their application as far as what they're, what they want to do being on Borough Council. When we all ran, we all had a specific thing that we really had on our mind, plus others. Everything's important. But there was always one thing that I had a goal to do. Unless the things that I seen on your, your letterheads was safety, jobs, businesses, recreation, and taxes. So, I'd like to know which one is the most important for each of you. They're all important. I'd just like to know what you relate to.
All right. First one, we'll start here, go one, two, and three.
I'd like my focus, I think that is priority for me. Can you guys hear me? It's definitely health and safety. I'm a career nurse, so it's always in the, you know, forefront of my mind. And many of the issues that Borough Council encounters and in our surrounding community impact health and wellness, whether it's physical health or mental health. Some examples are, right now, the Borough Council is working with some projects. For instance, a market house project right now, where they have partnered with CHI. CHI is focused on Healthy Columbia. Now, I do understand that mainly children, but, you know, the same issues that affect children also affect our adult population. And they, you know, Healthy Columbia in regards to safe housing, safe neighborhoods, which also impacts the police, and food security and nutrition. Borough codes and enhancements. They deal with, you know, housing issues, fire safety. And then currently, right now, we can't forget pandemic. We're all sitting here in masks. Obviously, that has affected, you know, the physical health of a lot of our residents, as well as the mental health of, you know, students that are missing out on, you know, in school instruction, which I understand school board is completely different, but they're still our citizens. And then it's also affecting the fiscal health of our small businesses, who have been impacted by, you know, not being able to be open, cutting down the amount of people and, that are allowed in their, in their businesses, as well as people that are afraid to go out and shop. So, those are, those are a couple of things that Borough Council is already involved in, that I would like to see continue and also move forward, so that we have a safe community for everybody. And then that we can, the way we can be prosperous. Because, you know, without that, without the help of the community, we're certainly not going to, you know, we're not going to be prosperous, and, you know, our friends and our family and everybody that lives here, you know, aren't going to want to live here. So, we want them to stay, and we want this to be a place where people come, want to stay, want to shop, and feel safe.
Thank you.
Like you said, all those things are important. I think the thing that I like to see most is probably local jobs, local source jobs be able to, small businesses thrive and provide local opportunities for residents of Columbia. So, but again, all those things are important, and, but if I have to pick one, I'd say that.
For me, I would say the, the high property tax is, is a huge issue here, especially in Columbia Borough. And different ways it's affecting throughout every, every community member. You know, for instance, our senior citizens. You know, most of them are on SSI at this point. Some of them are working part-time jobs, kind of making ends meet. You know, raising the property tax higher and higher every year, especially during the top of the world that we're going through right now, it is really difficult. A lot of moms and dads aren't fortunate enough like myself to be home all the time. And so, they rely on, on, you know, grandpa and grandma to watch over those kids, which is great. But if you're continuing to raise the property tax, that $100 a year, or $300 a year, or whatever it may be, that's groceries and things like that, they can no longer afford. And, and to me, you live a great life. If you're retired, you're having, you should be out there having fun. That $300 should be given for the cruise or for something of that nature. To me, that's, that's pretty important. You know, be able to enjoy your life after, you know, putting in time to work for a wonderful career.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair? Yep. All right. Council, really, we have to make a lot of very difficult decisions that can impact taxpayers for decades to come, especially spending and large projects. And I would like to ask you all how confident and comfortable you are making those kind of decisions, and what skills you can bring to council that would help you be able to do that.
Sure. Any, any type of decision is hard to make regardless, you know, whether it's taxes or, you know, changing of heart, you know, for, for something offensive. But the skills that I, that I would bring, you know, is my military background. Obviously, I was able to lead, you know, church during, through a war time zone. And that's been extremely beneficial to me, especially when it comes to being a parent of two kids and a single father. Yeah, I think when it comes to doing something of that nature, it would be fairly easy for me to go ahead and, and make this happen and not worry about any kind of questions that may happen. You know, from someone in the community or someone, someone wanting to be accounted with. Yeah, I'd be, I'd be very, very happy to make any kind of tough decisions when it came to that and not be second guessing myself more than I am.
And we're going to move on. I have no fear. I wouldn't have ever planned.
Two times in the hot seat. All right. Well, I don't even know where to start with this. My job as a nurse requires me to make tough decisions all the time. There is a reason that nurses are the most trusted profession. Some of the things that I bring to the table that will benefit Borough Council, 99% of them come back to my job and what I do for a living. You know, we as nurses and I myself have the ability to form connections and build trust in a short period of time. I have a different patient population from the same shift. And I need them to trust me, to give them proper information, to help them, you know, decide what it is they want to do when they're formulating their plan of care. And it's essential for me to do my job, just like it's essential for you guys to do your job. You have to have a connection to the public and your community. Community. I'm required to have empathy and operate with an ethical duty for people who are often at their most vulnerable. Our community isn't just full of people that have money. We have a very vulnerable population. We have, you know, some poor school districts in, you know, in one of the poor school districts in the county. So, we're required to look after their interests as well. I'm an advocate for my patients and must be their voice, just as the council has to be of the citizens that they represent. I have the ability to prioritize and make tough decisions, sometimes at my own expense. The, you know, people don't always like what I have to say. I'm often delivering bad news. You know, you're not getting out of the hospital today. You know, yes, you have to take these medicines for another day. No, you can't have water. And I face criticism at times from physicians, families, patients, people that are unhappy. And when you work with the public and you serve the public, that is also something that you guys deal with as well. I've rolled shoulders. I'm, you know, I'm not here to, I'm here to represent the people and not, you know, and their interests. So, and that should be everybody's goal, that's sitting behind this desk. So, you know, that for me is one of the most important things. You know, we have people that rely on us, that need our help, and we are supposed to be their voice. And this is our chance to do that. And so, I feel that I'm able to bring these things to the table, because I do them every day for the past 30 years, you know, in my profession.
Yeah, so, I don't have as much life, life experience making these hard decisions. But, yeah, I work as a mechanic and, you know, make decisions for the long-term benefit of whatever I'm working on, or try to recommend the, the best net outcome. So, sometimes you have to make, you know, you can choose between a short-term fix or a long-term solution that's going to provide the best benefit. And you have to balance, you know, is this project worth putting this kind of money into? And so, yeah, I mean, I guess I would approach things in a, in a nuanced way, because it's not always, I can't always make decisions on the first face value or judgment that comes to mind. But, yeah, things are complicated and take time to think through. And I, I enjoy taking that time to balance the options, see what is going to bring the best outcome for everyone. And if that, yeah, and like with taxes and other things, it's hard to know, you know, where's the balance of raising taxes for short-term benefit of an initiative of, of the borough that will eventually bring value to the community in a way that's, you know, that's going to benefit everyone? Or the other way around, obviously. I, I want to hold the line on taxes as a Borough Council member.
Thank you all. Thank you. I'll go. Okay. In your own words, what is the purpose of the Sunshine Act? And give an example of something you feel would be a violation of that. And we're at two, three, one.
Two, three.
Two.
That is something I don't know much about, so I'm going to have to pass.
Okay.
I'm actually the same vote with him. I'm not entirely too sure what that is.
Okay.
I apologize.
That's all right.
I believe that the Sunshine Act has to do with transparency in government and, um, you know, we wanna make sure that we're following the rules. And Frank is pretty big on that when he comes to the council meeting, um, you know, meetings because, you know, we don't wanna violate and do things the wrong way because otherwise it'd be bad to, by this, where we don't want it to, um, you know, we end up getting ourselves in trouble and then obviously that's not physically responsible because we're already having to.
All right. Your turn. And now we're at one, two, three.
How long did it take you to call that?
He's a computer programmer like that.
Not too long, I'm like...
It was more confusing when I was four.
Yeah, it was. It was definitely more confusing when I was, it was like a Sudoku game once.
Um, I guess my question would be to each of you, uh, first of all, thank you, I appreciate trying to be on council. Uh, I, I'm glad we had four candidates, I wish we'd have more, but I'm thankful two guys, gals, uh, submitted for it. I guess right now, one of the biggest topics is McGinnis Airport and our decision to purchase it for an industrial park. I guess I'd like to say a sure honest opinion of that decision.
Um, can I answer that question first?
Sure.
Do we have specific industrial things in mind that in there are already labeled for that or is that just for future candidates?
That's for future candidates.
Okay, so right now there's no one more than?
No.
Well, honest opinion is, that's a tough one to answer without other facts. Um, you know, purchasing something without a, a formal plan on what you're going to do with it, you know, is kinda purchasing something in the hopes that we're gonna get what we need there. So we're spending taxpayer money to buy something that may or may not pan out, um, which I feel is risky. You know, we have an obligation to our constituents to, you know, be fiscally conservative with their money, you know, and, you know, I know, um, the fiscal aspect of it is digging on everybody's plate and we can't operate in the red. We have to keep everything above board. Um, so I wouldn't be able to go on that until I knew that there was a formal plan, you know, or at least a generalized idea about where we were gonna go with this project.
Right.
You know, what kinda, you know, what kinda industries do we want there, you know, what that was gonna do to our tax base, you know, how it was gonna help our borough, you know, if there was gonna be any plan to, you know, withhold, um, them paying taxes for a period of time, you know, because we can plan on things operating a certain way. But what this pandemic has shown us right now is that no matter how much you want things to work a certain way, you know, there's always something that can throw wrench into it. You know, we, we've just dealt with this situation where we've got small businesses closing. So you might've been planning when this business is coming to do, you know, to help fill that industrial complex, but they might not be there to do that. We've got a lot of, you know, businesses that are cutting down staff. I work for a, a major health system that just fired nine hundred people, nine hundred people in healthcare. So, you know, that just shows me that you can't plan on anything for the long-term, you know, to turn out the way. So you have to hope for the best and prepare for the worst. And that includes, you know, projects that we're gonna run with taxpayer money.
Thank you.
Those were some excellent points there. Um, I think that if there's a way for Columbia to expand into the industrial area and, and provide opportunities for businesses to come and bring jobs, that, that's really exciting to me. Um, obviously, there are good questions to ask as far as, you know, the long-term, you know, what's the, what's the plan to get that rolling as quickly as possible with that purchase? But overall, that, I mean, that's exciting to me, seeing progress.
Uh, my thoughts on it, uh, can, can be rather extensive. Um, it, it could be great, uh, it could be horrible. Um, again, what, what the young lady was talking about, as far as the taxpayer money, um, it is a big issue. Um, in, in the long term, if it is industrial, um, use, uh, depending on who you bring in, that's, that's more added traffic, uh, you know, coming in and out. Um, you know, whether it's, uh, if it's folks just here in the borough working in, that's great. Um, but ultimately you're gonna have folks coming in from the city, uh, coming in from, you know, from outside sources, that's just gonna bring more and more traffic into it. However, the revenue for, for gas stations and things like that, have food running around, uh, and other small businesses could be fantastic. Um, I, I tell you one thing, uh, that could cause a big issue, and that's only because I used to do it myself, is semi trucks coming in and out. Um, a, a lot of the quote-unquote steering wheel holders, uh, we used to call a lot of them, they don't, they don't pay attention. Um, you know, with, with our, our, our younger population out running around playing, not saying that they will be out there in the induc-, in, you know, in the industrial area playing. Uh, however, you know, kids are water off at all times. Um, you know, that's, that's always an issue, uh, you know, whether you're the number one parent or not. Um, so all in all, I think it would be a fantastic idea, you know, to, to use that space for reasons. Um, but ultimately you need to factor out all program costs before you make any type of decision that comes about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to echo Eric's thoughts on thanking you for stepping up to the plate, uh, Mr. Sexton, thank you for your service. Um, let's say you're out walking on the trail and you run into someone who is from out of town, out of state, and you strike up a conversation, what do you want them to know about Columbia?
Great question. Um, so from my experience, I, I've been, uh, I've lived in Columbia Borough, uh, three separate times, uh, throughout my life. Um, and something about the borough always has brought me back. Um, initially I came here, um, and, and lived, uh, with Columbia Piercing back to the eight, uh, I'm sorry, two thousand twelve, uh, time. I was a live-in, I would run a calls, I know Chief from, from back then and, and Mayor Lux. Um, it, it was, uh, it was enjoyable and, and to see how the borough was back then with a lot of the drug pop, crime population and, and those issues compared to what it is now, uh, is absolutely fantastic. Um, you know, I, I came back in two thousand fifteen, I'm still kinda getting feeling different things. And when I initially came, uh, when I came back finally back in two thousand nineteen, I said, this is where I need to be. But something about this place is just bringing back those small businesses or, or just the community and attitude is, uh, is, is wonderful. You know, during all these snows that we've had, thank the Lord, because I love snow, um, I, I, I had the freedom to get out there and help. These are the old ones in the desert. My dad would call, say, hey, we got snow wherever he does things. A hundred twenty over here, thank you. But, um, you know, I've had the opportunity to get out and, and shovel and snow blow, you know, neighbors and, and help them out. Um, you know, I do free charge, I, I don't, I don't need the extra, you know, funds. I mean, if you're gonna offer it, sure, it's great, but, you know, it goes with my kids' thinking. Um, you know, just the, the camaraderie with, with the community is, uh, is absolutely unbelievable. And I'm, I'm really happy that we came back and, uh, excited for the future for my kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number?
No, three, one, two.
Okay.
Yep.
Happy after all these bullets. All right, so you wanna know what I was all about Columbia? Um, well, I'm gonna start off by saying, I've lived here in the borough for fifteen years and I grew up across the river. And Columbia had a very different name across the loo-, uh, across the river. Um, I moved here purposely because I lived, I grew up in a small town, I lived in a small town, and I wanted to raise my kids in a small town. And I did, raised six of them, you know, I'm a single mom, you know, within the school system, we, you know, we're, we're active in our community. And it's a welcoming community. The day that I moved into my house, my neighbor came over and offered to help me move. He was born and raised in Columbia. Um, you know, my neighbors embraced me, um, even knowing that I grew up on the other side of the river. Um, so I think that sense of community, um, is apparent, um, you know, and we, I don't know, I, I don't even know how to put in words, you know, how glad I am that I made that choice. Um, and I'm, I'm intended not going anywhere else. The, there's so much culture in this small area, um, between the residents and the small businesses that we have. Um, and I work in, in a metropolitan area, so I work down in Philadelphia area. So I see the big cities and the problems that come with the big cities and I see what is not happening here in Columbia. Um, I, I see a lot of community involvement, a lot of volunteering from the community members. I do some myself because I think that that's important. And so that would be what I would tell them, is, you know, the small community is not a large, large town, but the people that live here are proud that they live here and they wanna help and serve each other and you just, you know, just stick in a lot of that. And again, it's the same thing, my neighbor showed my walk for me, you know, and my parking space is, is cleared out, you know? And the one that does it the most is a retired lady in her seventies. You know, we all work together and that's what community needs, you know, community is, that's what Columbia is, and that's how I would say.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Just, uh, I've got neighbors that I call friends and just, yeah, people looking out for my three-year-old daughter, she runs around and it's just, yeah, I'm proud to call it home and it's been a great experience. I grew up out more in the country and didn't have close neighbors and it's been a great, great time. I moved here in two thousand fourteen and I've just had a great experience with Columbia. So, yeah, I think that's what I'd say.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks everybody, it's good to see you. It always surprises me, there's always so much interest in public safety. I, I noticed, I guess, three, three of the four applicants expressed an interest in the public safety. I'm public safety lead. And, uh, it is rewarding, it's fun, for sure. But, uh, as you may know, or may not know, we're a very busy borough. We're a very busy borough as far as, uh, the police department is concerned. And we're a very shorthanded borough as far as the police department is concerned right now. And albeit, we all are as a community, I believe as a nation as a whole, working to, to better those, uh, that's, that situation. What would you feel at this point, right now, is the most important? What would you, what would you do right now as, as a, as an initiative or a thought or an idea, uh, to support the police department in making sure that the residents of Columbia Borough are safe? Makes sense?
Two, three, one. No, you're first. Two, three, one.
I wanna pass it off. Uh, good question. Yeah, I think policing is such a, it's such a difficult job and I wanna thank you for your service in that area. I don't, yeah, I don't think there's easy answers to the, to the common questions that are being bounced around in our nation at this time regarding policing and because it's such a complex system. I mean, we have overlapping jurisdictions and, uh, I don't think there's a simple, easy answer to the questions that are being brought up. But, I mean, to try to stay on like, what would, what do I think we should focus on as a community and, I mean, we've gotta have the backs of our officers and our police, um, as a community, um, and support them, that's... I, I just think like policing is something that's a community, it should be community-oriented, um, where it's not just this system versus the community, uh, but it's by the people and for the people in, in that kinda way. And so, I don't know, I mean, again, there's a lot of complexity to everything that, that gets thrown around these days in conversation, but, um, definitely just try to provide the resources that are needed and as a community, focus on understanding each other and talking through issues, um, because if we don't talk about it, it, things can blow up and get out of, get out of hand.
Uh, as far as public safety in the, uh, in the eyes of, of community members, uh, when it comes to the police department, um, something I, I've talked a lot to my neighbors about, um, and, and my kids, uh, well, my son doesn't, before we talk yet, but he gotta get some gifts, um, is, uh, is, is more opportunities to, to kinda meet the officers, you know, who's actually protecting them. Um, you know, they just see Joe Schmo running down the street, what, what do they do? You know, are they, are they really after the bad guy or are they just, are they trying to create bad things? Not saying that they are. Um, you know, but it would be, it would be fantastic for, you know, for, for little Suzie or, or Jimmy and my daughter to meet, you know, the, the officers that are certainly, you know, have retained the hope to serve with their public. Um, yeah, I, I think that would be an absolute fantastic idea. I know we have the national laid out, uh, and obviously unfortunately it was, you know, you know, squashed, you know, across the country. Um, you know, but trying to do something that, uh, that in a safe nature, um, you know, during these times, uh, would be absolutely fantastic and I think extremely beneficial. Uh, when it comes to, um, you know, different individuals throughout the community, especially with the kids, I know my daughter just absolutely loves it when the police come by. She's like, Dad, the police come by, it's so awesome. I'm like, that's great. I, I, I'm not, I don't, I don't enjoy the side of it anymore. I, I used to enjoy the side of it when I was, when I was running, but it, it doesn't faze me anymore. She's like, Dad, what are they gonna do, what are they gonna do? I don't know. I'm not sure. I don't, I don't need to know anymore. So they're gonna do their job is what they're doing. That, that's my ultimate answer. And, uh, yeah, that's what I would say would be, be my thing, is just an opportunity to, to meet the officers who are serving and protecting the community.
Thank you.
I also agree with Mr. Sexton. I think that there is a huge opportunity for the, um, police officers to connect with the community and in essence earn their trust, because I think right now that's not happening. Um, and, you know, one of the things we would suggest it is, you know, for them to have some time and greet. Um, I can tell you from experience, um, my kids, I, I've raised four kids through Columbia school system and officer angle is amazing. There was a Friday night that I didn't go to a football game, that he wasn't there. He ran the program at the church, um, after, I don't remember what the name of it was, but the kids would go there after, after hours so that they weren't getting in trouble. And I think that the kids respected him for that. Um, you know, he seems to have a good rapport with the kids and part of policing our community is prevention and, and knowing that, you know, he's gonna listen to what's going on with them, um, gives him a unique, you know, perspective in order to, to do his job. And, you know, in essence, we wanna keep people out of trouble. So, um, you know, I don't want anybody coming down my street trying to break into my house and so public safety is very important. You know, there's, there's gonna be some opportunity once the market house is open because it's an event place, to run some, run some events where... because it's an event place to run some, run some events where, you know, not only can it benefit the vendors that, you know, work in these aisles in Columbia, you know, it's a chance for the public to come out, you know, just like the politicians do, the meet and greets, you know, bring them out to meet the people in their community. And I think the hardest problem is to get the people that don't morally come out to the meet and greets to come because, you know, we need the whole community, not just a part to feel like they're involved. And so, how do you reach across the aisles to that, you know, especially if, you know, you're dealing with a certain area that might, you know, have more trouble than ours. But you really have to foster that connection with your community so that they don't always think that you're just out to harm them or to, you know, be the bad guy. Because I can tell you from experience, you know, I've had a couple instances where I have relied on the police to come to my house and they've always been respectful, they've been respectful of, you know, the other people that were involved. I wasn't in trouble, didn't know, but they were there, you know, and I know you guys also when it comes to public safety also attend, you know, the ambulance calls. I had one day in the back call 911 because my daughter was having a seizure and within two minutes I had a fire truck, two ambulances and two other police officers pat my house. That's the benefit of living in a small town, you know, and having access to the things that keep you safe.
Thank you. Great answers. Thank you all.
Thank you. Does anyone have any follow-up questions they would like to ask or anything else?
If, if you don't get voted in tonight, do you plan on running at the end of the year?
Well, you could do it very well.
Well, yeah, that's it. If you do, you'll be.
In the upcoming election.
Yeah, probably again. I think I saw where some of you said you were going to do that, but I'm not sure.
I have a question, is that something, like this is in a planning position and, you know, isn't that something that should be up to the vendors to decide as far as?
Well, you would have to run for election.
The term is just this year.
Right, I understand that, I understand that. And I'm going to help with that as well. So.
Because even if, you know, if you don't get in, we would still love to have you run, you know.
Well, and then another thing is too, I guess the problem is that not, that shouldn't be a reason to include or exclude somebody.
No, 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 no. That has nothing to do with the vote tonight, no. I'm just curious because I think one of you said that you were planning on running at the end of the year, I'm not sure.
I have to do, I have my application, my petition, I will do.
Well, that was yours that I saw.
I believe that's a problem.
Yeah, okay. That's the only reason why I asked, you know.
Yeah, because I'm really looking forward to getting more involved in the future. You know, some of my fathers, I look for my, you know, for my kids, someone that they can look up to, you know, that they're, you know, full of dad.
I think you all had great answers. This is a really tough decision for me. I might have to go to the bathroom for a while.
And Peter, did you, we didn't hear from you, are we playing?
Yeah, I'm seriously considering it, yeah.
I have a few housekeeping questions that I just want to make sure.
That's okay, you can talk about. Do any of you have anything that would be considered a conflict of interest that would prohibit you from voting on a borough matter? No. And you have all lived within Columbia Borough for the previous 12 consecutive months and you are all registered to vote in the Borough of Columbia. What else am I missing?
I think you, I think you hit the three major ones.
I hit the three major ones, okay. All right. Any other questions?
You are not required to.
No?
No.
Because, I mean, this is sort of our show here.
I don't know what the attorney said, but I'm going to prove the point. Just give me a minute. Go back to number five. Counsel just approved the agenda. It's all loaded on the agenda. You go down to number nine and a half, it says for public comment on items on the agenda, there will be a three-month time period per person, per topic. Now, I'll make my, I have one question, I can give it to the board or I can give it to them.
Frank, we're not, we're not doing questions. This is, this is not the, the public input part that we're doing interviews.
If he would like to make a comment, he can make a comment about these. He does not have any.
Absolutely.
He's not going to ask a question to the candidate.
Right.
My point is, it's on the agenda for three minutes.
Right.
And I'm getting tired of people just cheesing whenever they want to change the agenda. So, I really have a question, but I'm going to put it to the counsel. My only question that I have is any applicants a veteran? Because that's an easy question to answer.
Yes, Mr. Sexton.
So we have one more, okay. Thank you very much. My other question.
Any more questions?
I just, Peter, your daughter has a very unique name. I assume you know where it's from. Can I ask you how you pronounce it?
Selah.
Selah. My daughter, my oldest daughter, is spelled the same. We say Sila.
Okay.
So, beautiful name, beautiful name. That was very important. It's a unique name, you don't see that often, so we'll have to talk later where you got that from.
One final housekeeping item. Just want to make sure that I read it correctly. You two are in the sixth ward and you are in the first ward. That's what I thought. Okay. We don't, we're, we're an at-large community, but I think it's important to have representation from all over the borough, so I just wanted to clarify that. So, all right. Anything else? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion for Chris Machonya to fill the vacancy on Borough Council.
Is there a second? That motion fails.
Motion that Pete Stahl would be elected to serve the vacant position.
And do I have a second? All right.
I'd like to make one.
All right.
Ryan Sexton.
Do I have a second? So, at this point, we have no motions with a second. Does this mean we are tabling this until, do we ring bill in now?
Can you guys, you still have, you still have, you have 30 days to make the appointment, right? It is your job to make an appointment.
Right.
It doesn't just automatically go to the vacancy board because you don't feel like making a decision.
Right.
So, you have 30 days, which would still include the meeting on March 2nd. So, if you're going to table it tonight and there's nothing that, you know, nobody has obviously stepped up and seconded, you have until, until that meeting of March 2nd, you can make a decision. I would suggest that you think about it between then and now if you're not going to do something tonight.
Yeah.
Heather, was all three numbered?
Yeah.
I didn't hear that, that's why I guess.
It almost sounds like nobody wants all three on.
Or we all want all three.
So Evan, can you answer a question for me though? What happens in the interim till the March 2nd meeting? Do we accept more applications?
No.
How does that work?
No, you would not be accepting more applications. You've got kind of your set number, we set a deadline for that.
Okay.
Just because there wasn't a decision tonight doesn't mean that you go back and open that back up.
Okay.
Is there a discussion that's supposed to take place among council members? Either this meeting or another meeting?
You can certainly discuss it and make a new motion.
Tonight even?
Yes, yes, absolutely. You know, I think, given that none of your three motions got a second, I think it's probably a good idea just to open this up generally to discussion and see what.
I didn't want to be wrong.
You can do that, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Keep me straight.
Why is here?
I would just like to echo that I do appreciate that we do have three people sitting here to actually interview and choose from and everything. I was disappointed with the lack of a second on any of them. I personally, again, will just say that I've often said it's important to have representation from all parts of the borough and I was really struck by having someone not from the sixth ward because everything seems to be, the sixth ward seems to be the power center and, you know, I really like people from other parts of the borough because they bring a unique perspective in.
No, we're not in that area, we're in Route 30, you're not here about.
I don't think it's a problem with the state.
No, I like your answer because you have nice focus stops.
Well, like I said, you know, like I said, they're all, they're all, as far as I'm concerned, eligible to be.
Yes, I agree.
Sitting at this table, they, I'm pleased with every one of you. If you want to base it on what ward you're in, I didn't choose, Ryan, because of what ward you're in because I knew it was one, but that wasn't on my mind. But, like I said, they all answered very well. I like the military experience and, yeah.
Might I want to get up to the question?
Yes.
Because I'm just a little curious why we were asked the question, would you make the tough decisions? Do you guys need to make tough decisions right now? And so.
And we can't make the tough decision.
Yeah, we can't make the tough decision.
You're making tough decisions, guys.
It's about the vote.
We need a second to do that. We need a second to do it.
Well, that should be good news to you. We're carefully considering it and I am very torn right now.
Should we vote to have nine seats instead of seven?
No, that has to go on the ballot.
You know, I nominated Pete Stahl. I wrote down all the answers to all the questions that were asked. I would have to say, you guys do make it hard. You all have your own unique look, your own unique experience. Love that you're a nurse, so caring. Love that you're a vet, I'm a vet too, love it. Love that you're a mechanic, man, hands-on, you get it done, understand all that. But I was listening for a common thread among the answers and I checked marked, I wrote all the answers down and one of the things that I believe is important to this Borough Council and you guys, is this whole idea of economic development. We talk about taxes, we talk about a smaller police force. When we need a smaller police force, I would love to have a smaller police force when we need that. Not today, but someday. And how do we do that? We do that by economic development. We do that by bringing jobs into the borough, by bringing opportunities, by giving people that live here now the opportunity to do something for themselves, better themselves, grow their own socioeconomic status to whatever they wish to be. Have a community where first and foremost, the folks that are here have an opportunity to better themselves. Then secondly, other people from the outside coming in to contribute to that. But it kind of has to work simultaneously. The one thing I heard Pete say over and over again was this idea of, "I'm excited about what's happening out at McGinnis." He's the only person that said, "I'm excited about that opportunity." Because of why we're excited about it.
Right.
Why? Because of economic development, because of jobs, because of lower tax, more tax-based, lowering taxes for all. It's a win for everybody. So, to me, those are the important issues at hand. I think that economic development and job opportunity and opportunity creation in this borough solves so many problems. I think a lot of our problems come, a lot of our problems are just symptoms of that one major problem. That's my opinion.
So I can say anything?
Yeah, it was actually just a question. And Todd actually touched on it, you know, obviously there is, you know, one problem that.
Heather, we should get his name in.
Yeah, want to get your name and address to the record?
Robert Machony, 1045 Screw Street. And this isn't about any particular candidate and maybe it's, I guess, for the process in the future, should there be another vacancy? But considering the question that Eric had on McGinnis' property, considering that it's an upcoming, you know, decision made directly by the council and that everyone here is applying really to be almost an equal in that decision, I feel like it might not be proper to ask those things, especially when it comes to disagreements on upcoming specific decisions. And most of the questions were focused on like qualifications and why you're well-suited for the position, to make your own decision. And I don't know if factoring in whether or not the candidates are going to vote the way you want on a specific issue should be acceptable, I guess, so I would ask that council, you know, disregard that, that specific.
I disagree with that.
I disagree.
And I disagree with that as well because what we're getting at is the core of the vision of the, of the individual who's going to take a position here on council.
Right.
And that's important to understand because council, even though we have different views, we all understand what our vision is for the future, where we're going and how we're going to get there. We may have different ideas of how to do that, but it's important to know that, that we all have a common vision as we grow this borough. We all believe that the purpose, I mean, not a purpose, but the potential that our borough has in the coming years is phenomenal and we all understand that. We all know that there are certain things that could absolutely affect that positively or negatively. I think it's a totally fair question to ask for that reason.
I agree. That's definitely a point, I guess, maybe I resent my. Thank you, Peter. You didn't ask Sarah if she had any other questions or anything else.
I'm sorry if I'm talking real loud to want me to be yelling.
Nope.
Don't yell.
You probably explained it, but I probably didn't hear. What is the procedure going forward, step by step?
For what?
What happens here, tonight?
Well, we're going to.
So, if someone is appointed here tonight, there's a paperwork that they've got to fill out and then at the beginning of the next meeting, we would have the mayor swear their name to the position and then they would fill out Pam Williams' term, which ends at the end of this year.
Hey, my understanding is nobody was appointed.
Not yet, we're still talking, Frank.
Oh, I thought you took a vote.
Well, we tried.
There was no vote that was taken.
I humbly apologize.
Nope.
Still in process, Frank.
Still in process. The discussions, I don't even want to make another motion.
I motion. I motion that we elect Pete Stahl to fill the council vacancy.
Can I just correct your appoint Pete Stahl?
I'm sorry, appoint. We want to do a yay and a vote, right?
We can do a roll call, as you suggest.
So, okay. I rephrase that. I motion that we appoint Peter Stahl to fill the vacancy, council.
Is there a second?
And Heather, just a matter of protocol, you are allowed a second. You can't make a motion, but the chair can second.
Oh, I can second.
You can.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. Just to get everybody...
And again, a motion to second is just to bring it out on the table. Then you guys can have more discussion and then the vote can follow that.
Okay. I have a motion by councilperson regard, a second by councilperson Kaufman, to appoint Peter Stahl to the vacant Borough Council position. Will you roll calling this?
Do a second.
Do a second, yeah.
Oh, you did a second.
We have a second. Is there any other discussion on this? No? All right. I have a motion by councilperson regard, a second by councilperson Kaufman, to appoint Peter Stahl to the vacant Borough Council seat. Roll calling.
Councilperson Kaufman.
Yes.
Councilperson Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Councilperson Stevens.
No.
Councilperson Whitner.
No.
Councilperson regard.
Yes.
Councilperson Zink.
No. Either that or it's going to tie all the way up there.
Forgot to do this.
So that's three, three tie. So the motion fails.
Can't make another motion, can you?
We can.
Yes.
Okay.
You can.
Can I make a motion to, oh, what about me? Ryan Sexton?
Do we have a second?
Wait a second. Is there a... So it fails, it doesn't, the mayor or another person doesn't?
The mayor doesn't vote in this, in this one scenario. The mayor does not vote to break the tie.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand the process.
No, it's just us.
Good questions.
This is your baby, work your way up.
No, no. You said wait, I was like, okay, wait.
He had that diabolical chocolate.
Normally, the mayor does break ties of a vote of council. This is the one scenario in which they don't.
Right. Do I have a second on Ryan Sexton? I will second it. A motion by councilperson Stevens, a second by councilperson Zink, to appoint Ryan Sexton to the vacant Borough Council position. Is there any discussion? No? All right, we have a motion by councilperson Stevens, a second by councilperson Zink, to appoint Ryan Sexton to the vacant Borough Council position. Can we roll call, please?
Councilperson Whitner.
No.
Councilperson regard.
No.
Councilperson Kaufman.
No.
Councilperson Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Councilperson Stevens.
Yes.
Councilperson Zink.
Yes. All right.
Try again.
I would like to nominate Chris McShaw to be appointed to serve on Borough Council in the vacant seat.
All right, I have a motion by councilperson Whitner, a second by councilperson Kaufman, to appoint Chris McShaw to the vacant Borough Council seat. Discussion? All right. Roll call, call.
Councilperson Whitner.
Yes.
Councilperson Fitzgerald.
No.
Councilperson Kaufman.
Yes.
Councilperson Stevens.
No.
Councilperson regard.
No.
Councilperson Zink.
No.
So now what do we... Can we bring out a deck of cards?
Well, I would just offer that we've gone through all the names. No one has come forward. Unless somebody wants to make another motion, we simply move this to the deadline, which is our workshop at the March 2nd meeting. At that time, if we're still at a stalemate, the next procedure, Evan, if you can walk now through the...
I think then you would, that's when Mr. Cloyde gets involved in the vacancy board would bring you...
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, correct.
Bring us what?
That would bring our hire, that's Mr. Cloyde's hire.
He would break the tie.
Yes.
Oh, I thought he would do that tonight.
You have to, you have to wait 30 days before he could be activated. So if nothing is done tonight, we'll have to wait to the workshop on March 2nd, at which time you guys can try to vote again. If still is nothing, then Mr. Cloyde steps off and he does his role. You want to explain that role briefly?
Yeah, so he is going to look at, you know, and, you know, he's kind of, I guess, your hired gun in this case, if you want to, if you want to say that. He looks at everything and he is going to, you know, he's going to kind of step in as an extra person here to help you make that decision. He's kind of considered the expert on vacancies. I don't know if you, you can be that, but you know, that's why he's there is to help you guys make that decision if you're unable to.
So at that point, then he would be the seventh vote and he would break the tie.
Yep. And we certainly don't want it to go longer than that, I will tell you. Because if you go to the court of common pleas and ask them to appoint someone to their, your Borough Council, they're going to lock you out of the courtroom and you don't want it. They don't want you there.
All right.
I promise you that. So let, you know, we'll try to make it easier here.
Yes. All right. Do you want to go for more here tonight or are we going to table this until next week?
I say table it.
I just don't have to either one want to talk with each other.
Okay.
All right.
So fortunately, we have time for that. We don't have to call a special meeting. So we need a motion to table this to a date certain, which will be March 2nd.
All right, so I have a motion to table the appointment until the March 2nd meeting. All right. Who wants the motion and who wants the second?
I'll second it.
All right. All right. I got a motion by councilperson Whitner, a second by councilperson Kaufman, to table the appointment for the Columbia Borough Council vacancy till the new, or, until the March 2nd work meeting.
You think this is easy. I'm tired right now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That is tabled.
Thank you all, though.
Thank you all.
For wanting to step up and serve.
Yes, and please feel free to stay and listen and soak up what you can while we're, while we're here.
You do not.
No, you can move back.
If you like your seat, you can just move it back or you can relocate, whatever.
Yeah.
You can stay there.
I know. Could I have a motion to approve the accounts payable payments between 2/16 and 2/18 2021? And a second? A motion by councilperson Kaufman, a second by councilperson Stevens, to approve the accounts payable payments between 2/16 and 2/18 2021. Just so, to refresh everyone on this, we will be approving the payment at council meetings and then we can sign checks right after. This is preferable way rather than just having, coming in, signing checks, whoever can do it. This way, we all see the bills before it gets, before they get paid. Does anyone have any questions on this? No? All right, I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, a second by councilperson Stevens, to approve the accounts payable payments between 2/16 2021 and 2/18 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Pay the bills. Next, could I have a motion to consider the IT proposal for upgrade to the servers and firewall? And a second?
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson regard, a second by councilperson Fitzgerald, to consider the IT proposal for upgrade to the servers and firewall. This was a planned expenditure in the budget. This is part of our Borough Hall updates. The servers are necessary because what we have is old and really needs replaced. Likewise, the firewalls need replaced. This will include firewall for the market house so that we can have our security system running and those kinds of things. I think we all realize that our servers are in desperate need of some attention. Any other questions or concerns on this one? Okay. I have a motion by councilperson regard, a second by councilperson Fitzgerald, to approve the IT proposal for upgrades to the servers and firewall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. This is definitely needed.
It is needed. And again, as you said, this is a planned expenditure. We just need to get these things up and running now. Infrastructure's important, but data security has become even more important recently. So we need to make sure that we have locked down and secured everything the best that we can. So thank you. We'll get on this right away.
Good. All right. Could I have a motion to consider authorizing the Borough Manager to sign and execute the contract with BGA and F for financial services?
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, a second by councilperson Fitzgerald, to consider authorizing the Borough Manager to sign and execute the contract with BGA and F for financial services.
So just a few of my, a brief description of this. With the resignation of our former finance manager, Kyle Watts, who was doing a great job getting us into a good place, we want to make sure that we don't lose that momentum. We want to keep going in the right direction. We brought on a temp who's doing a fantastic job for us. But I want to make sure that, one, she gets all the training she needs and has the support that she needs to do her job well. And secondly, to carry on the work that we've been doing to ensure several things. One, that we get all policies and procedures written and in place on the expenditure of public money. All right, every one of you talk about the importance of that. I've been in this business almost 30 years and I can tell you that that's one of the most important things that we do is how we handle and how we spend public money. So I think it's extremely important. And two, from direction from council, we want to make sure that we have a solid plan going forward to ensure the financial stability of this community. So they're going to, they're going to work with us to help ensure that, that we put policies, procedures in place and we have a plan to stabilize our budget process, our spending process, our revenue process, so that we are, we are where we need to be fiscally in the years to come. So that's, that's the goal and motivation behind this. This firm was recommended to me by the same companies that helped us with the bond refinancing. So I had a good interview with them, a good talk with them. I feel very confident that they'll be able to help us do the things that we need to do over the next year or two. So this will be a contract we'll evaluate as we go forward to make sure that we're meeting all of our goals and objectives and that we're getting done all the stuff that we need to do.
I have a question about it, obviously, because I'm a little confused about Amanda was hired to take Kessi's position as accountant. Am I correct?
Initially, that's correct.
Okay, so we bring this group on. Then what happens to our advertising for Kyle's position as finance manager?
So we have several options. One, if we feel like Amanda, who we brought on now, is not doing the job, then we can, we can look for somebody else. We're in the no obligation legally, Evan, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, to, to post any position like this. So we can bring her on. We can, if we feel like we need some other help, we can do that. Or we can go out and look for someone else. We feel like we can get better options. Those are all choices we have.
Are these people, then, this group, would be taking Kyle's position? Is this, am I, I mean, filling that sort of...
No, no. Right now, Amanda was originally hired to simply fill in the, the job of the accountant. Upon Kyle's, the resignation of the finance manager, we now have, we had two vacancies in the finance department. We brought on a temp, which is very common in this situation, so that you can, you can fill the gap. So we are evaluating right now whether we still even need two positions in the finance department. We are looking at the software that we use. We're looking at reducing redundancies and data entry so that we can streamline and improve the process that, that we are going through. And then we'll evaluate. And again, looking at protecting public money. Is that a position that we need to? Do we need one? Do we need three? These are all things that we have to look at and evaluate going forward. So we are carefully looking at everything. But right now, this will just be oversight for the finance department as a whole to ensure that we're getting everything online by the book. And they, this company, this is all they do, is public sector finance for municipalities. And the way that I would describe them is they're kind of municipal firefighters. They, they come in and they, they understand that their job is to make sure that we are doing everything legally, by the book, and in the best way possible going forward. So they are, they are the experts in doing exactly what we need them to do. So they'll be here to guide us, to be advisors to us, to work with our auditors, to work with our finance department, to work with you as council, to make sure that we have clear transparency and good policies in place on everything to do with financial spending.
Could I just add something to that? Sharon, one thing that I've learned in everything that has happened there is that it's easy, oftentimes it's easy to get a temp for accounting or the financial, but the majority of those people do not have experience in municipal finance. So this is, this is pretty much, will also give Amanda, if she is the correct person, the, the support that she needs to learn the municipal finance end of it. The big example is, this week we realized we hadn't, that we needed to still submit the liquid fuels report. Well, she didn't even know how to do that yet. This group, they can step right in and help with this kind of...
Not do the report, but guide her and be advisor to her and how to do these things.
Yeah, so the next one, she can do herself.
So we're essentially hiring them to sort of train too. But I'm, my question would be to, we don't really know how much this is going to cost us because it's by the hour. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's an open-ended contract and it's as needed.
And some of these were kind of high per hour. What I saw, 130 was one.
In my world, that's, that's very reasonable for the level of service that you're getting. And they've, they have assured me that they will, they will send the person with the lowest billing rate to help us that is qualified to do the task that we need them for.
Well, the lowest billing rate was still 65 an hour and that's quite a bit higher than what Kyle would have been getting, I would assume.
But they're not going to be here 40 hours a week.
Okay.
And they're not getting benefits.
Not getting all the benefits. So this is, this is going to be on an as-needed basis. And you'll see the scope of services. They, they built it that way so it's an à la carte kind of menu that we can use them as we need them for anything in the municipal finance world.
And I think Amanda probably would say, you know, hey, I'm right, I'm stuck in this position right now. We need somebody to come in and help.
And so, so this is the guidance.
If you don't want to do it wrong.
Correct. So that we do everything right. And, and finance in itself is a rather complicated world. Municipal finance is even more complicated. And I want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can correctly.
Well, prior to getting Amanda, how long was that advertised? Like, I mean...
What advertised?
Well, the position for Kessi or...
We advertised the position for the accountant internally and then we got the resignations from the finance manager. So at that point, I had to change direction and I realized that the, the task at hand was to get somebody in here who could work with Kyle immediately, which is why, and, and this is, this is, I've done this before. When you are... When you are trying to fill a position that you're, you're of a short deadline on, you bring in a temp so that they can help out. And you can do a temp as, just simply as a temp, or you work in a temp-to-hire. So, we approached TriStar and said, we would like a temp-to-hire for someone who has the needed fiscal background to fill these positions. And that's, they, they recommended several to us. We went through them, we looked at them, we interviewed these people, and, and felt like she would be a good fit. I can tell you, as, as a, as a manager, you can, you can teach skills. I can, I can train people to do all kinds of, of skill-related things. We can bring in people to train. The biggest thing that I need is someone who's gonna be a team player and work with us. And I can't teach temperament. But I can, we can train and teach people, we can send people to classes to learn skills. So, what's most important to me is how do they work with the team? How are they gonna fit in? And then we will get them trained to do the job that they do. As long, if certain jobs require, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, no sense. I'm not gonna bring a mechanic in to do heart surgery. But I can, I can bring people in and train them to do these kind of skills. She already has the background, she has the, the foundation to do accounting, and she does it very well. There's a, again, it's just learning the nuances of public sector finance. And I, I believe at this point, she has the ability to learn these things, but we'll keep evaluating this as we move forward. I need, I need experts to help guide me in making that decision.
Well, I'm not doubting that she probably has the ability to learn these things. I'm just wondering if we should bring on this firm in addition to her rather than looking for someone who already knows how to do all this? That's, that's?
Sure.
That's fine, but in the meantime, what do we do? We still have to,
Pay the bills and get started.
We still have to pay the bills and do all our reports and, and file everything we need to do with the state and everything else. We can't just stop that while we're doing the job search.
I went, I went through a similar thing when I was in, in Manheim Borough. We had to quickly fill the position of, of the finance manager. We went through another firm like this who came in, and they filled in up there for several weeks. And we realized that our best option, we had some internal candidates who might be able to do it, we had some other people who may move over, but our option then was to go out and, and look for somebody. So, we did that. So, this just sets us up in the position to keep things moving, keep, keep the finance department running, and then we can make a decision, we have time to do it. We have time to make that decision.
And I will tell you guys, my first question when he said this, that he was doing this, was, wait a minute. We have Segur Swisher that does our audit. Why are we not going to our authorized? And the answer is, it has to stay separate from the auditor. We can't have the same firm doing this function and the other.
The auditors can't check their own work.
Yeah. So, I did ask that question.
So, who has the oversight of the hours? You doing it?
Me, and ultimately, you guys.
Can we, can I change my motion and put a fixed amount, not to exceed?
And at that point, I, I would come back to council to ask for more?
Yes.
If you'd like to.
Is there a minimum amount per month? See, we just kind of contracted with these folks, we never use them and never give them a dollar. Is that okay with them? Or is there, is there a contract fee, a retainer, is there anything like that involved with it?
No, it's a time and materials contract, so it's purely on an hourly basis as we need them. We have, we have a lot of work to do. And if we can spread that work over the next twelve months, I think we'll be very effective in using this consultant to the best of our advantage while, while looking over Amanda's shoulder, looking at, looking over my shoulder, making sure that we're doing everything right. And they will, per the, our, our agreement, they will work with our auditors, and they will read the audit reports and see what else we can do to improve our financial status here.
Well, I see them working in three different ways, if I'm right. Kind of as a backup for Amanda.
If needed, they can do that too.
Catch the overflow.
Right.
And train. So, so an assistant to her, another employee, so to speak, to manage overflow and train her all at the same time for one low price.
And, and, and in a, in a worst-case scenario, should we, should we need to replace Amanda, they can step right in and absolutely do this. And they've done this for other cities and communities around the area. So, they can go all the way from stepping in and doing the full job until we find somebody to simply being a support and help. So, it's, it's a full service, in my mind, of, of everything that we need in the finance department right now.
Was this the only group looked at?
Yes.
And they were recommended to us by the firm that worked on the bond refinancing.
Yes.
And they did a great job.
Yeah.
They did a great job. And so, I, I trust their opinion, this is people they've worked with in the past, and, and they were recommended to us.
Yeah.
How long has Amanda been on board?
So, it's,
Three months?
Well,
Nine days?
We could, we could buy her out today, and we pay a penalty. We can wait three months, which is the, the normal contract time for a temp-to-hire. We can say, we need more time, we'll wait six months. So, at that point, it becomes our call of how long we want to keep her in the temp position versus bringing somebody in full-time.
So, pretty much, you gotta be serious about it, seriously?
Or we simply say, we need more time. And we will say, we'll go another month or two months and see. So, at that point, it's up to us.
How long do you expect to use this?
I would say, to be fair, I would like to go through a complete budget cycle with them so she can learn every, every nuance, because there's something that hits on, on throughout the entire fiscal year, which is a, we calendar year, fiscal year is aligned. So, I'd like to go through at least one full cycle so that we don't miss anything, and she becomes familiar with every step along the way. And, and then again, during that time, work with us, work with council. They'd, they'd be willing to come in and do a workshop with us on how to set financial policies, how to do five-year projections, and make sure we're doing everything right, making sure we're meeting the, the goals that you guys have established when we talked about these things. So, I would say at least a year to bring them on.
And all your executive bridge, you have eighteen thousand now.
Sixty.
Hundred and fifty thousand. Sixteen. Is that a very happy number?
That's sixteen thousand is the, is the budgeted amount for that line item?
So, that's not what I think we're gonna spend. And I, what I wrote in my, in the, in the report there is, that's what the current budget line item is budgeted for those services. We will need to do a budget adjustment in that line, because we will, we will overspend that line item this year, because that's normally our fees for the auditors.
So, it's not actually a budget item for this firm?
No, no. That's just what's been budgeted in that line item that we will be taking this money from. So, that's why I wrote there that, that this will, this will have to be adjusted in, in a budget adjustment in the, probably in the first quarter.
What's the anticipated savings from Kyle and Kessie leaving to having Amanda solely onboard at this point? I guess maybe the question is, let me rephrase it, is, is bringing this firm onboard, does that offset those two salaries? And Amanda, is it kind of equal to those two salaries? Or is it more, or generally less?
There, there's a chance it could be more initially. But I think it's a, it is an investment that's worthwhile, because this has been something that we have been looking at for a long time. And I think having that level of expertise coming in to guide us on, on more than just training Amanda, but really truly establishing our financial policies and helping us with long-term projections. For example, one thing, stories that they shared with me is, they, they worked with a, a city in Chester County who was in a, in a similar financial position like we are. They had a, a public utility, they sold it. They got a one-time cash infusion for their budget, but they didn't replace the funds that came out of the general fund. So, they had capital money they could spend from this one-time infusion, but they hadn't counted on the fact that they had lost revenue out of the general fund. So, this, this firm stepped in and said, hey, let's work with you, let's get those two lines back to where they need to be and, and work on your economic development, work on your, your thing without raising taxes to the point where it's gonna hurt the community. And so, that's what they did, and they worked with this community for several years, and they got those, the financial position back on the right track. So, when I explained to them where we are right now, they said, yeah, we, this makes sense to us, we've done this before. This is what we can bring to the table for you.
I think it makes sense, especially for that reason.
Right.
Get us focused, this is about the future. It's not, it's not solving your problem now, it's about the future.
I would address my motion to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Second, my exact point. Bring it on back.
Will do. That's fine. Thank you.
Fran, councilperson Fitzgerald, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes.
Thank you.
One other thing I do want to just say, for the record, for the public, the copy of the contract that was in your packet was, the, it had references to township everywhere. The correct, the correct version of it has been received where we were referred to as in Borough, so, the contract that we signed, if we do authorize it to be signed, it will be the correct verbiage, and that will not be a question. That will not be in the show.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions, comments, concerns?
The only thing I have, a comment on this was, when Kyle came here, I don't think the Borough spent that kind of money to help him. He came in and took over and did one heck of a job over the last couple of years that he was here. He made a lot of improvements, moved stuff where they were supposed to be. And I think it's a shame that Kyle left. But my only concern is, and when we're talking about money, I don't care if it's fifty thousand or a hundred thousand, they, they wanna put a limit on. But, you know, six months down the road, she decides this wasn't for her, she leaves. So, we're back to square one. We'll, we'll have them in here, but we're still gonna have to find somebody else to do it. That's my only problem.
Always a risk.
I can't, I can't believe that you can't find a finance person that has experience in municipal stuff. I'm not against, and I hope she works out, and I hope she learns quick. And you come to us and say, hey, we only spent forty thousand dollars. We're gonna hire, you know, I would recommend we hire her, you know? But I think in the minds of some people, this could run up one heck of a bill. And we still only have a temp here, you know what I mean?
And, and hopefully,
Hopefully, it does.
A temp and, and on our way, well on our way to have better financial policies in place, no matter who we hire.
No, I agree with you on that.
And well on our way to a, a, a spending plan for the next five years. So, even if, if, if that's all we get, I think it's well worth the investment to get us on the right track.
I think to your point, Mark, that's exactly right. I think what we're missing is that level of expertise and understanding of how to streamline, how to focus, how to eliminate, how to plan, how to, how to, how to effectively manage municipalities' finances. To not just get the bills paid, but to save money and plan for the future and build. We, we don't have that. We, we, we had some really great folks, did really good work, but we didn't have that expert. And I think we're at the point where we need to have an expert to fix it for us.
Yep.
Well, there's, there's another thing you all need to look at. You're gonna be, next week is gonna be March. Pretty soon, you're gonna start thinking about budgets. And, and right now, you don't have that, I don't think you have the ability to put together a budget and the budget justifications for the community that's gonna satisfy what you want to do with your budget. Bringing these folks in, no matter what happens, you're gonna be able to do that. If you scrap the whole thing right now and hire someone off, someone else, I don't think they're gonna be able to learn what's happening in Columbia Borough and put that budget together, plus that justification. So, you're gonna need that assistance to do it if you want to do it right. Or you'll wind up right back where we were before with budgets that maybe weren't making a lot of sense, maybe weren't very good, whatever have you. But although I, you know, let me, let me coin that and say, everybody did their best as long as I've been around here. Don't, don't get me wrong there. But I agree with you, Todd, there's that level of expertise to take you above and beyond where we've been, that you have an opportunity there.
And help solve our problems.
Yeah.
Agreed.
And it's a, and it's a, we can cancel the contract at any time, right?
We can, yes.
It's not like we're beholden to them for years and have to rewrangle contracts and negotiate fees and all that other crazy stuff. If it's not working out, it's not working out.
Right.
We can cut the cord.
All right. I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, a second by councilperson Fitzgerald, to authorize the Borough Manager to sign and execute the contract with BGA and F for financial services with an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Next, could I have a motion to reconsider the previous approval of the Gavin Contract Amendment?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson Bregard, a second by councilperson Fitzgerald, to reconsider the previous approval of the Gavin Contract Amendment. The contract amendment that we are talking about is the contract amendment where we would pay them for rebranding and,
Logo and re, and branding.
Logo and branding.
And LULO.
And LULO, the communication assistance for the McGinnis project.
So, so a brief explanation on this again, for the public. We, we brought on the firm Gavin to, to work with us to, to help us ensure that we communicate clearly with regards to the purchase of the airport, because it is a, a big investment and a big expenditure so that we can, we can ensure that we're doing the best that we can in, in through that process. And I think communication in that was absolutely critical, and it continues to be critical as we move that project forward. Due to some, some legal issues that are outside of our control, we had to put the project and, and moving things forward temporarily on hold while they worked through some, some issues, again, outside of our issues. It's an internal issue for them. So, the contract we had with Gavin was a retainage contract that had a, had a monthly fee. And then if we exceed that fee, then the cost simply goes up from that state. Rather than trying to pay a retainage when, when the services weren't needed during this time, when we had the workshop back in January, we were, we were talking about communication, it was suggested that we, we go back to this firm and look at whether they could help us with our, our logo and branding that we've been talking about for a while. So, I approached them, they were interested in, in working with us on their project, and they brought forth a proposal that we voted on at the last meeting. After that meeting, I should say also during that meeting, councilperson Bregard was also appointed then as the communications lead for the Borough. We got together and had a very good meeting. And, and during that meeting, councilperson Bregard then offered his services pro bono to, to help the, the community and work with the community to develop branding and logos. That's what he does for a living, and he, he brought that forward. Liked the idea, but went right to our attorney and said, is this something that we can do? Is this something that, that works for us? And we worked through the details of how he can do that. We feel comfortable that it's, it's a legal process that we can do. And Todd has graciously volunteered his time and expertise to bring us and work with us on this. So, this move would be to, to change the previous action to amend the contract by thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to then, in, in my opinion, reinvest that money into rolling out the branding and logo work that we'll get from Mr. Bregard and our team when we get it moved forward. So, if, if you guys vote to rescind that previous action, we will work with Gavin to, to look at the current contract we have with them and how we, how we continue to keep them on for the, the McGinnis and anything other communication issues that we may need here for the Borough, and then authorize councilperson Bregard to, to then work with us on the, the logo and branding. Anything you want to add?
No, no, I think, you know, just because I know this question will probably come up. If Todd's doing things pro bono, there's no issues with a, a conflict of interest because there's no pecuniary gain there. So, that's, you know, kind of the big issue that you might have with, with that. So, I just wanted to address that.
Evan, what happens to someone then, like myself, who voted no on the Gavin, the part two kind of Gavin? The logo thing? Do I still vote to rescind this then? Because I didn't vote for it.
Yes, even though you didn't vote for it, the majority of council did.
So, I still have to vote?
And so, that was the official action, even though it wasn't as radical what you did. But you would, I'm assuming, you may vote to rescind this if you weren't in favor of it the first time, so.
Right, right, right. But I just didn't know if I needed to participate again, or how it would work.
Yes, you should, yeah.
So no happy questions, comments, or concerns with this?
I have some questions. The first one is if Todd's voting pro bono, we're still going to vote on?
Yes, absolutely.
The choice.
What do you mean the choice? Vote on the choice, what is?
You're gonna present whatever you want.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, okay, the choice of what?
What the file of logo and branding is for the borough, yes.
Yeah, well, the understanding is, is if I would like to, if I may suggest, as I enter into this as a, on a pro bono uh agreement is that um uh uh I, I would like to have as much final say over the final product as possible. Uh I can certainly open to suggestions, conversation, critique and talk about that, but I will absolutely rationalize and talk to you about every aspect of every detail. And uh what I'm going to do is ask you for your trust.
And Gavin was too wise with something. We can say we all know it, we do it.
Uh here's how those contracts usually work. May I? I'm not saying this is con- not how their, their contract is written, but I know how those kind of contracts work. There are a certain number of revisions that you're allowed to make that are written into the agreement. Once you read that, reach that number of revisions, it's typically two, one kind of maybe big one and one very small one. Beyond that, if you can't come to the conclusion then, you either don't get the project or you gotta pay more to go to the next levels. It's the way it works.
They, they, when I've done this in the past, they, they roll out their best option for you and that's the one they usually lock in on and they're open to adjustments to it, but they have locked on to a design at that point. If you want to change it, you're, you're paying more money to get it redesigned.
Here's, here's what I would like to add to this. Um it's more than just a logo. You gotta understand, this is more than just an icon or a logo in a, in a pretty color that, your favorite color. Um really, at the end of the day, what this, what this brand needs to do is it needs to unite everybody in this borough around a common cause, which is our future and our past. Um it needs to resonate that message with our folks. We all, this is, this is a logo for our town. This is a logo for Todd. This is a logo for any particular borough council or even for us and what we like. It has to be a message that resonates uh the history, the, the value, the values of our community as well as, and have them buy into it, as well as be inviting and, and speak to those folks who we're anticipating to come to our borough in the future to help us grow with economic development and all these other things and uh participate in the great things that are going on like Down the River Park and our fine museums, uh Watch a Clock and antique shops. Uh so there's a lot of thought that goes into what this says that happens like this, uh that you didn't even know that you felt or thought. And if you, it, that's why I'm asking you to kind of take my lead on it. Uh we've been doing this for thirty years. Uh we know how to communicate with branding and what's important in a brand. You know, it's kind of like a, you know, Counselor Stevens, he's, he's an expert in elec- uh he's an expert electrician. There's a particular way, you need to do particular things to make sure that the current gets to a particular place, right? It's the same way with branding. Uh it's not an art project. It's, it's very sophisticated and it takes a lot of thought. I think I passed out for a minute there. I hear my name. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rambling. But here's what I can't do, this is what I can't do. I, I can't commit myself or, or other folks in my firm to go round and round and round and round and round and round pro bono on, on a, on a brand. Because everybody has their own opinions of what they like. Is that, is that fair to say?
Sure.
Who gives a trademark?
You guys do.
We do, we own it. Yeah. We own it, we protect it, we lock it down so that people don't steal it, that's.
And I would even, I would even like to say this, even if you do this brand Bergard or Bergard, Todd Bergard or Bergard the agency, uh by law, we are not allowed to participate in any kind of business transaction with the borough for at least twelve months after I would leave office. So this is not a prelude or a precursor to some kind of big contract.
Right.
You know, in the years to come, this is a conversation about this one project, about saving us thirteen thousand five hundred dollars and getting something meaningful for the borough.
Thank you, Todd.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? I have a motion by Councilperson Bergard and a second by Councilperson Fitzgerald to reconsider the previous approval of the Gavin contract amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
I would need to
What's that?
Do you think those are hard to do? You're gonna walk the days to do the brand?
I think it's probably a good idea. Technically, you wouldn't have to because no part of funds are being expended on that. Uh but I think it's probably a good idea to have something in the record like that if that's what you would like to do.
Yeah.
So do I have a motion?
Thank you, I agree.
Do I, do I abstain from this vote?
Yes.
Again, technically you do not have to because you're, you're not getting any, any monetary gain from this, but you're, I understand if you would like to because it's, you know, directly involving your business, it's a decision. I would, I would certainly understand if you wanted to abstain.
When do I say that? Now?
Yeah.
I, I would like to abstain, please.
So let's think about this. The motion Ca- uh Councilperson Kaufman makes a motion to engage Todd Bergard in the development of the brand and logo for Columbia Borough. Do I have a second? Pro bono.
And do we have to mention the, did you say copyright or?
We discuss copyright.
It, we will own, we will own the brand and logo.
If Todd's okay with it, what we would normally do in this situation, and we'll probably have to modify it a little bit, is what's called a work made for hire agreement, which basically says that anything that he's doing on this project was as a result of being engaged by the borough and therefore the, what comes out of it is the, you know, is the property of the borough. Uh we'll get, we'll have, because there's no, you know, no money in changing hands, we'll probably have to modify it a little bit, but it'll look something like that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, did we vote already?
No, we haven't voted. I don't even have a second yet.
I can't, we haven't started.
Paul's going.
He's doing it already.
Um a um brand and icon for Columbia Borough.
And I'll second it.
And I have a second by Councilperson Fitzgerald. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
So the vote will be down as, as five zero with one abstention.
Yes. Paul, did you get that actual word in my motion? Good, thank you.
The counselors, thank you for your trust.
Thank you. All right, next, could I have a motion to consider the changes to the facilities use request for the haunted lantern tours?
Second.
And a second. A motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald, a second by Councilperson Kaufman to consider changes to the facilities use request for the haunted lantern tours. Um oh, yeah, that's right. It is the
It's just the date of change.
It's just the dates have changed.
Yeah.
And the setup time.
Yeah, that's the only change.
And the CHI is still good with, with this change?
Yes.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald, a second by Councilperson Kaufman to approve the changes to the facilities use request for the haunted lantern tours. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to reconsider the approval of the facilities use request for the industrial hemp fair? And a second.
Second.
A motion by Councilperson Kaufman, a second by Councilperson Bergard to reconsider the approval of the facilities use request for the industrial hemp fair. Our portion of this is the request for the trolley um and closing off the five hundred block of Lopez Street. Um it we are just a few months away uh and still with the uncertainty of of COVID and some other things um we're looking, uh we're, we're thinking that this may not be the right year again to do this and we have to put this one hold. Um does anyone have any concerns with putting this one hold or actually, I mean, at this point, I think we just wanna say we wanna cancel it for now and if it ends up you know, another year, we can make it work, that would be great, but I think, we don't want to just say we're gonna keep postponing it, postponing it. I think at this point, we have to decide, should we just rescind this and call it done for now?
I'm, I'm in favor of rescinding it.
And we would, we would reimburse anyone that had, any vendors that have submitted the money and so forth. At this point, we've already identified them, so we will be able to send that.
Yes.
COVID is a public safety issue as well.
Yes, it is. Questions, comments? All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, a second by Councilperson Bergard to rescind the approval of the facilities use request for the industrial hemp fair. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to consider authorizing staff to issue an RFP to upgrade the timepiece mechanism on the Borough Hall clock tower? Anyone?
Second.
And a second. All right. A motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by Councilperson Stevens to consider authorizing staff to issue an RFP to upgrade the timepiece mechanism on Borough Hall clock tower.
So just briefly, uh we've been talking about the clock there and the importance of it for this community. I have Wilson here who's been doing the legwork on this, this project. But at this point, we're realizing that simply maintaining the antiquated and um customized pieces up there are, are running into a lot of cost and um Wilson doing some good research for us found that we can replace the inside mechanisms of the clock with electronic mechanisms, it's gonna save us significant money initially. And then on the long term, the maintenance looking out those years is gonna greatly reduce our maintenance costs on this, this piece of equipment. So everyone's clear from the outside, nothing will change. It'll look the same, it'll run the same. We keep the, the actual bell, which if anyone wants to see it, it's absolutely gorgeous, a large belt there with the wooden hammer, the strikes. Though all that will remain the same, the tone will be the same, the hands will all remain the same. The only thing that'll change is the mechanism that actually runs the clocks. And again, this is a, an immediate savings on that and then a long-term savings with the maintenance over time. And with, if, if we decide to go this way, at point when we, we make the motion, I would also then be asking council's permission then to, to donate the innards and the runnings of this clock to the Watch a Clock Museum to put on display and, and their display.
They have, when, when Mark and I went um to do the link link update from there, they explained to us that they have a new um public time display that they're putting together and this would our, our thing would be one of the
The Keystone pieces would be on the system.
Yeah, Keystone piece in that, in that display, so we thought that was pretty cool.
Wilson, do you have anything you want to add to that or anything?
No, just the, the considerable savings uh would be uh probably half the cost to install that electronic mechanism than it would to repair the existing mechanism. And that the maintenance would be uh almost zero. The only thing that would be in some point in the future, there's a, uh four electric motors, small electric motors that may be uh necessary to replace, but uh the cost of them is uh insignificant.
What happened to the gentleman uptown that used to work on that? Is he now around anymore?
Dr. Laird.
He had the, had a car place across from the park.
I can just say that our dealings with uh that gentleman have been less than satisfactory over the years.
So we're redeciding now where the maintenance has been not kept up to the standard of, of maintaining this and we're we're having to replace some significant parts of the mechanism of the clock, which is gonna add a lot of cost because every piece has to be custom made. And so part of that is this age and, and the, the type of equipment this is. But I, I think the iconic clock tower on, on top is, is worth preserving and saving for the town. And the bell and the sounds that people hear would be preserved. And it's kind of cool.
I'll take your vote for it. Any other questions, comments, concerns? I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald and a second by Councilperson Stevens to authorize staff to issue an RFP to upgrade the timepiece mechanism in the Borough Hall clock tower. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, is each one of these a separate motion?
I'd, I'd like to do them separately.
The first one, I would like to have a motion to consider authorizing the borough manager to sign and execute a contract with geotechnical services, for geotechnical services with ECS for twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald, second by Councilperson Bergard to consider authorizing the borough manager to sign and execute a contract for geotechnical services with ECS for twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. As stated on the agenda, this is part of the due diligence for the purchase of McGinnis Airport property. Uh we wouldn't have this, uh we would be spending this either way as it is part of the due dil- due diligence that we need to complete for the property.
So the, the original plan and what we had talked about is, is signing the purchase agreement and then entering into a, a period of three to four months to do this due diligence work prior to making a final decision on the, on the purchase of this land. Um due to the delay we're currently experiencing with the legal factors, which again was outside of our control, we thought, let's take advantage of this time now, go ahead and do our work so that when we, we get to the point where we can sign the contract, we can move right into the decision point of whether or not we go ahead and purchase this land. So again, all this will have to be done prior to the purchase. We're just expediting this a little sooner so that when we bring it forward to make the final decision, you guys have all of the information, you need to make that decision.
Heather, what you said was just, I just want to clarify, you said we'd have to do this either way. What did you mean?
Before or after, you know?
The purchase agreement.
I thought, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and we've already authorized and signed the purchase agreement. It's just, you know, at this point, it's, we're just kind of getting in the jungle of things.
Well, my question would be, what happens though if, with it being in legal limbo, so to speak? What would happen if we did the due diligence, spent this money and for some reason never got to purchase the property? Could that happen?
Um I don't say no, it could never happen, but the McGinnis family is, is working right now to subdivide off the house. Um the house is the only part of the property that's in, in question right now. The house is the only part of the property that's in, in question right now. So the absolute worst case scenario is instead of us buying the full airport property, all 56 acres, we would buy 55 point something acres. The house would be a legally subdivided lot off of that. And we would still be able to move forward with a, a development of an industrial park and then attract people to that park, to, to build out the park. Best case scenario is that plan never has to take place when we buy the full thing. So either way, we're moving, we can move forward and purchase the airport property.
So after we would purchase the property and have this due diligence completed and so forth, would we still have costs associated with running water and paving streets out there? Or how would that work? It would fall in the borough or not?
So the one item on here is item number three, which is the site analysis and master planning contract with ELA Group. And often what, what is done is we, we get the site ready almost for a build-to-suit model. So we'll have water sewer available to people, we'll have electric available to people, we'll have access into the site available. And then people can then come to us and say, well, I need X number of acres for, for this development. We can figure out how to put it in there and then we will work with them on their portion of it. But we will get the site ready for the development of an industrial park the best that we can. How far we go on that depends on the, the contract with ELA, what comes out with the master site plan. And then who comes in to, who is in line to look at investing in this property and how much land they need. All those are factors that'll be determined as we move forward. This is a very fluid process as we walk forward. This is not uncommon for this type of development, but this is, this is the way to get us in the best position to make these decisions.
Well, there was two different prices too on these two pages. On the agenda, that the one line for Geo-technical Services says 24.5, but then on the other page for the ECS, it says 29.240. Are, are they two different ones or is it just the addition of meetings that kind of looks like?
So the, the base price I put in there is the 24.5. If they need to get into other meetings, that would be the additional cost. I'm trying to keep those down as, as tight as we can. So if, if we needed to go into more cost than that, that would be going to change to the contract.
Is it fair to keep in mind as well, Mark, that even if we did go to the point of contract with them and we went through this process and spent these monies anyway for this due diligence, we may find out that the property is a bust for us anyway and we would have invested the same amount before or after the contract. The monies need to be spent one way or the other.
To, to ensure that we're making a good investment for them, President.
Yeah, so I, I think that that's, that's something that we want to remember when we vote on this. We have to do it anyway.
Right.
Madam President, if I may, these, these three items that you're, you're looking at right now, $145,000. You have to do them in order to purchase the property, okay, either before or after. You can factor that money back into the purchase of the properties
The sale price money, yeah.
to the end user. If you're smart, you're not going to sell something at a loss. You're going to factor that back in. So, so technically, you're not going to, you're going to, you're going to bet, you're going to put $145,000 more into it expecting to get that back out, plus your purchase price. Then again, a portion, if not all of that, there's been discussion about taking the steep slopes in the quarry area as a conservation area, park, whatever have you, similar to out in West Hempfield Township there in Grub Lake Park. If you apply to BCNR for that, there's going to be a match. This can be a portion of the match also, because you have to do it for that too. So, so this is a wise investment and a needed investment on this whole package that you're technically, you're not going to lose any money on.
I think you're right, Mayor, there's no guarantees, but I think this is what we kind of all call a well-managed risk. So we're looking at it from all angles. There are no guarantees, but I think that all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, Plan Bs, Plan Cs. Everything's been thought through.
And, and we've been working with the Columbia EDC, the Lancaster EDC. And I, I can tell you that right now, as, as, as many of us have been watching the housing market and the crazy things that it's doing, there's a, there's a need right now for industrial land here in South Central Pennsylvania, as well as here in Lancaster County. So there is, there is a need right now in the real estate market for this kind of land because it's just not available out there on the market to get. So it's not a guarantee, but it, it shows us that we, it, it's a calculated risk that we are moving forward on knowing that, that we have interest. And I'll, I'll say this, I've had other agents already approached me saying, hey, if this goes through and you guys purchase the land, I'd like to talk to you about locating out there. So this is not a, a shot in the dark guess. This is, I think, a very well calculated, and, and this is not me. This is a, a well put together team. This is us working together as a team to do the best that we can to provide economic development and financial stability, to provide support for our local businesses. I mean, keep going, the, the potential for this is, is good to really be a, a strong turning point here in the borough for our, our revenues, our sense of place, our, our residence, our businesses here. And, and not just us, this is, if, if we pull this off, something like this is truly a development of, I would call a development of regional impact, it's going to benefit our neighbors as well around us. So this is not just all about us either. This is about really working together as a community as a whole to, to bring jobs, to bring reinvestment into Lancaster County. That's why the, the Lancaster EDC has been involved with us along the way because they see it as a value for the, the county as a whole as well.
So you're saying only the house is involved in this? I thought it was more.
The house is involved in the, the legal issues that we're dealing with with the McGinnis family. The rest of the property is not.
How much land goes with the house?
As little as possible.
As little as possible to meet our minimum lot size requirements and access requirements for that lot.
If it has to be subdivided.
If it has to be subdivided. And if it doesn't have to be at all, then that, that was an insurance policy, if you will, to ensure that we can move forward.
But later down the road, if, if it were to be subdivided, we would again be paying money for the house if we wanted to purchase that, a separate purchase.
If we had to buy it separately, and Evan and I have gone through these gymnastics, then the initial offering for the remaining land would be reduced by the cost of the, that lot so that the total gross total at the end is equal to what we've been authorized to spend for that land as a whole.
And I see they did mention the environmental study they did before R2 did. So how can you explain how this study differs, these studies that are being undertaken are differing from that former study?
The, the R2 study was a limited Phase One, limited Phase Two environmental study, which means they, they did enough to ensure that with, with a good level of confidence that there's nothing of deterrence to purchase it. This is going to a new level to give us the information we need to actually build out a site. So I think the first time it was, is this a good decision for us to make? And is it a safe purchase of this land? Is there any major environmental concerns? This has taken us to the level of, okay, if we do this, we know how to construct on the site, where to construct. If there are environmental concerns, how to mitigate those? Do we remove them? Do we cap them on site? Often in, in construction, some of the best ways to deal with environmental issues is to simply put a parking lot on top, seal it off, and so you're not drilling down into it. We had to do that in, in Mannheim due to the asbestos plant that's up there on the, on the southeast side, southeast side of town. A lot of the roads and stuff, and there's a big odd shaped parking lot in the back corner. That parking lot is, is covering a landfill that is monitored by DEP, so it can't be touched. And they, and when they knew that going into it, and that's an amazing industrial park for, for Mannheim Borough. So this would be the same thing, we would just need to know how we can develop this. Areas to, to be concerned about and look at so that we can do the best job environmentally and economically for the borough.
I thought, and I'm probably wrong, but I thought that this was going to be commercial, not industrial.
Well, it can be, the current zoning is light business, so we can have a variety of things in there. It could be, it can have some commercial uses in there, it can have some light industry. The reason that, and I go back to some of the interview questions that we looked at, is heavy industry use in there would bring a lot of trucks, a lot of heavy traffic down in this area. This is not going to be a heavy industry that'll be down in there.
Or a mixed use.
It'll be a mixed use, but mixed commercial and light industrial, not commercial residential, anything like that. So it would be a, a mix of those types of businesses. They may occasionally have a box truck or other things coming in, but you're not going to have a larger 18-wheeler that's going in through town to, to access this site. And those are the things that, that we as owners of the land would have full control over as we begin to build it out.
So we would be leasing to these?
Leasing or selling. We can, we can look at both ways. We could sell off parcels to them, we could lease big pieces to them. This puts us in a driver's seat to help control the economic future of this borough. And I, I think that's what we're looking at, is the ability to, to make those decisions what's best for us. And with our, with our partners.
Yes. Yeah, the Lancaster EDC is very excited about this.
They're good folks.
They are.
As well as our Columbia EDC.
As, no, Columbia EDC, yes. They're very excited as well.
And I'll, I'll say, this will play his ear, if you have any questions for him with regards to what we've done, he's, he's able to ask some questions as well.
I think one thing that a lot of people don't really realize, and you brought it up, and Heather brought up, there's more than just us involved in this project. This is, this is, a lot of people are involved in this. And I said this before when I ran for this office, that two things was codes and the other one was putting commercial property in town, bringing in good paying jobs and stuff. And I do see this as, I know it's going to, is a risk, there's a risk on everything you do, but I am in favor of, of doing this.
Thank you.
If not, I'm going to be living in your house.
We got room.
While Councilperson Bregard has stepped away for a moment, does anyone have any other questions, comments, or concerns? Yes, Mr. Gafter.
Frank Gafter. At my age, this will benefit me no way. I look at this as a money pit. If you just look at what, the little bit on the agenda that you're spending now, that's nothing. That's nothing compared to where you're going. Nothing's a guarantee in life, but can you sit there and guarantee you the taxpayer's not going to take a bath on this? Agreed, it's not, it's not going to do nothing for me. I'll be dead before this thing is ever even cut off the ground. I keep hearing in the background, housing. Now, housing ain't a bad thing if you put the right type in. But my understanding is the county has been looking for a place for years. And that's just in the back of my mind, well, we couldn't get the economic development. This is our next best thing. Well, I hope that would be good for Columbia. But I'm just telling you my, my end up. If I was a younger person, I'd probably look forward to that really going out there, providing we had good people behind it, that it would end up being something. But it's not going to help me whatsoever. I'll never see, I'll never see a return. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey Evan, oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say that, that housing is a, is a very important thing for us and that's something that we are also looking at. This is not taking that off the agenda, this is just not what this is focused on right now.
Could the land be taxed if we do not actually sell it, if we're just leasing it out?
It can be. What, you know, in that situation, right, the, the owner is not determinative on what a, whether a parcel is taxable or not. I'm sorry. But the, the use is what is determinative of that. So if, if there are, you know, uses that are allowed by the, the zoning ordinance in there, and they are essentially for-profit businesses, right? Nonprofits are the ones who don't generally pay taxes, like your municipalities and other community services, then that would get taxed. And if we were doing a lease like that, what the lease would say in it is the tenant would be responsible for any increase in the taxable value, the assessed value of that property. So that way the borough is not paying the, even though we're the owner, the borough would not be paying the increase in taxes that would result from whatever the use was.
So how does that work with the old fire company down on Front Street with KT Graham? That, I mean, we're paying $27,000, I think, of taxes on that.
I did not write that lease. That's all I'm going to say about it.
I'm sorry?
I said, I did not write that lease. Then you are, you are absolutely correct about that. And we are, I can promise you that we are actively pursuing our options there to stop taking a bath on that property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that, $27,000 a year on that property, I mean, I would assume it would be much higher.
It would be multiplied quite a bit.
And then we got to consider the market too. We're going to get taxed on that, so.
You're right.
You know?
Yep.
It's not just the initial costs involved in this.
That's true.
Thank you.
You are absolutely correct, yes.
Thank you.
Did I know my three minutes was up or not? I did have a question. What kind of revenue is that property bringing in at the moment?
It is $3,000 about right.
It's, it's, please don't quote me on the exact number, but the tax value right now is fairly low, it's around $3,000 a year, I believe.
I sort of think it's closer to 17. And I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm no extra.
Let me say this, Frank, let me, if, if you want to know the exact answer, we can look it up and get you the exact tax. I don't, I don't want to misquote on that one.
Yeah, the three sounded really, really low.
It does sound low when I say it.
I thought I read somewhere else.
Yeah, but it's in cleaning green.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a cleaning green property, so they get a reduction on the taxes right now anyway.
Thanks.
Mark, you said you had people reaching out to you associated with businesses? Do you have an exact number of how many that you can give us?
No, and, and, and that's just a, a, a statement to build confidence with the council that, that things are moving forward. Until I know that we have secured the, the deed for this property and we can begin to look at what it is, we don't know. We don't know how many lots we can get out there, but they're, they're having people, and some of them are Columbia businesses that want to stay here and need room to expand. And they'd like to expand out there and they see that as a value. So that's, that's all that I can say right now.
Okay. You know, one thing I would like to suggest is, you know, you explore the options of leasing or selling all parcels of the land. I would urge council to consider leasing it rather than selling it because the value of land is only going to continue to go up.
And, thank you, those are all things that we are looking at now to go through. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns? I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald, a second by Councilperson Bregard, to authorize the Borough Manager to sign and execute the contract for Geo-technical Services with ECS for $24,500. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next, could I have a motion to authorize the Borough Manager to sign and execute the contract for Environmental Services with ECS for $66,285? Yeah, sorry, I missed that. And a second. I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald, a second by Councilperson Kaufman, to approve, to authorize the Borough Manager to sign and execute the contract with Environmental Service, for Environmental Services with ECS for $66,285. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And finally, could I have a motion to authorize the Borough Manager to sign and execute the contract for Site Analysis and Master Planning with ELA Group for $54,000?
Seven.
And a second. I have a motion by Councilperson Fitzgerald, a second by Councilperson Kaufman, to authorize the Borough Manager to sign and execute the contract for Site Analysis and Master Planning with ELA Group for $54,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you, I'll be making regular reports back to you guys as we move this forward.
Thank you. Next, that is all the old business we have, now we have new business. I would like to start this discussion of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with a statement. I'd like to take a I'd like to take a moment to address one of the boards that serves the citizens of this borough. During a recent transition of members on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we discovered irregularities that we feel need to be addressed. We believe that there were several instances of a quorum of the board discussing and deliberating issues pertinent to the board outside of the public meetings. Our investigation has not yet been completed into all these matters, but we will work to ensure that any of the violations of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act have been cured pursuant to association of community organizations for Reform Now versus Settle. Regardless, the Borough of Columbia takes issues involving government transparency very seriously. While their discussions had taken place prior to the discovery of these issues with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we have accelerated our look into how we can ensure that all of our boards and commissions have the proper training and protocols to allow them to run meetings effectively, efficiently, and in compliance with all laws and ordinances. Over the coming months, in conjunction with the borough solicitor, we will be providing each board and commission that serves the borough with training on the Sunshine Act, the Right to Know Law, and work governance, as well as implementing bylaws and rules and regulations to ensure that the types of issues we have discovered in the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board do not continue to take place. The people of Columbia deserve transparent and responsive local government, and I can personally assure you that we are doing everything we can to provide just that. Thank you. With that being said, I wanted to have a discussion on here so that we can make sure, we currently have three members of that board. The first thing we have to, that we can talk about and decide is if we want to retain those members in light of the things that have been done. The next, once we decide what we're going to do there, we do have one person that has expressed interest in joining that board. We still need, we would still need someone else. But we also need to, I also wanted to take the time to discuss that board and what our vision is of that board, because somewhere along the line, it got lost that it was just an advisory board. And it became a board that made decisions and acted independently, and that's not what an advisory board does. So we need to make sure that as the board gets reconstituted, we know as council what our, our vision and, and plan is so that we can give them specific direction on what they should and should not be focused on. One thing that I personally would like to see in the directive is that any, any ideas that are brought forward to council for approval, if they are not taking place on a burden property, there is a good reason for it. We should not be, it's my feeling, we should not be using someone else's facilities when we have our own parks that we can be using. We should not be paying lat filters for parking when we have a large amount of parking down at the Borough Park and could there's something down there. So I don't know how anyone else thinks. I mean, I would like to see the, the events taking place in Rutherford Park, in Mankell Park, in our parks, in our neighborhoods, and not always being done in someone else's park. Cause the reality is Locust Street is not our park.
It's a very visible park.
It's a very visible park. It is, but it is not our park.
We may know that. I don't know how many people out there know that.
Right.
I think they see it as just part of the borough and a great place and very visible and easy access and downtown.
Right, but should we also not be going into the, into the other parts of the community that have not, have always felt like they're left out?
That did start out as a Borough Park event.
Well, it was, it was going to go, like money was gonna go.
Well, I thought it started out as a Borough Park, then it got too big and it moved up down.
I'm sure. Does anyone have any thoughts on what would?
There were three. You said there were three about four.
Yes, there is Susan Love, Taylor Callaway.
Beth Rumpel.
And Beth Rumpel.
Thank you. I was truly drawing the line there.
So we had a council lead, Parks and Rec lead.
Yes.
That person's no longer here. Do we still need a council Parks and Rec lead to oversee the Parks and Rec Advisory Board?
That's what I was getting at when we were talking about our leadership roles. Does that really need to be a leadership role or, or not? I mean?
Well, we don't have, we don't write bylaws for them.
They're going to write bylaws for themselves.
We will.
I mean, we have, we have a structure for them.
I was gonna say, we will, we will definitely help them and provide a template, and there may be a couple of things in there that we, we keep as Borough Council to make sure things don't, I don't wanna say go off the rails, but things, they don't, you know, get to a point where Borough Council doesn't have any control over them, cause you still wanna have that, so, yeah.
So the bylaws, once we can appoint a variety of members?
No, we can appoint new members now. The bylaws, it is the operational manual for how they function. That's, it's subsidiary to our own code which establishes these boards. So we need to look at our ordinance, make sure that what's in there is accurate and et cetera. But that's not precluding us from at this point, reconstituting the board, adding people to it, whatever we need to do. These are, these are things that can happen as we are moving forward. We don't have to stop everything and redo all this stuff. We can keep things moving as we go forward. We can, we can keep the three people on there if you want. You can replace anybody on there that you want. Every board serves at the pleasure of Borough Council. So if you feel the board is not meeting the goals and visions and policies and values that you guys are establishing as our elected officials, then you have the right to remove them. That's your choice.
Do we need to wait until they have the bylaws in place in order for them to convene and start, start meeting and offer suggestions?
Absolutely not. No, no. It's, it's a good idea to have them. It's not required by law. I highly recommend them. We will strongly guide them in developing good bylaws, but no, they can start meeting again soon. They don't have to have them to meet.
I think in understanding how long some things take to come to fruition, under the three people on there, excited about Parks and Rec and they're passionate about it. They love the community. They love our kids. They love our people. I say let them have at it, and I think that's a great idea, President Zink. Have them consider our own properties first before we go outside. Not all our properties can accommodate every event, but I think, I think that that's a great idea.
But we're around town.
Spring's coming, summer's right around the corner. People are gonna be getting antsy. I don't know of anything that's in the lineup right now for summer events, other than maybe Movies in the Park or something.
Lots of successful things, Movies in the Park. We now own that equipment.
Yes, we do.
Summer Bucket List was very successful. That will now be taken over by Susquehanna Heritage and Merchants Association.
Yeah, that was awesome. I'm so excited for this year.
Include Pokemon.
The Chalk the Walk was a really nice event in Locust Street Park. We had the Halloween event, which I think there were about 300 people who attended. The Gingerbread House display, which with COVID became a nightmare, but we did have some, you know, nice entries, and we displayed them in Borough Hall. The step challenge, Mark, I don't know. I don't know how many people are participating, but I do like the idea. So I think a lot of the problems with folks talking outside of meetings is that it takes so much to plan and coordinate for these kinds of events.
Right.
And they, at the last meeting, they suggested that perhaps we need more than one meeting per month just to get all the discussion and planning done.
Yes. And that, at the last Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, Mark and I went to talk to the board and let them know where things stood and everything, and what an advisory board truly does, and explained to them that it's, you know, the, the events need to be planned, not a month in advance. It needs to, there needs to be more. And if that means we have to do less of the small events, then that's what needs to happen. But it needs to come before council to be approved. No one should be spending money unless it comes to council for us to approve the event and prove the money being spent for that event. And they did have some requests. One was about the possibility of having more meetings. And we said if they decide that's the way they want to go for this year, we could do a re-advertising to add meetings, and going forward, then we're gonna add those additional meetings to what we advertise. Another request was a separate Parks and Recreation Facebook page. I still maintain the way I felt the last time and that. I don't, I don't want it to be a separate page. I, I know that the thought was, oh, we want them to hashtag Columbia Parks and Rec, but we want them to hashtag Columbia PA, not Parks and Rec. We want the hashtag us, not, you know, not just a portion. And so that's kinda how I feel on it. I also, in, in listening to them, I know there is a lot of passion and everything, but in listening to them, and I, we said, you know, what is, what is your vision? What do you wanna do? And they all were saying about, we wanna bring people in and this and that. And my thing is, Parks and Rec is a very, should be very, should be focused on our parks and our recreation. We have multiple sectors of our government focused on different things. We don't need everyone focused on bringing people here. I want someone that's focused on the people that are here. I want someone that's focused, because we have the merchants that are focused on bringing people here to shop. We have the restaurants focusing on bringing people here to eat. I want someone that's focused on the people that live here.
Excuse me Heather, but all the events I just listed were for?
No, I know, but that's what I'm saying. And so I wanna make sure that we as council give specific direction that the focus needs to be our residents, not bringing people, you know, we don't wanna reinvent the wheel.
When I think of Parks and Rec, I think of parks, the same thing. And activities at the parks. When I was a teenager, a young teenager, in the summer.
Now probably a chance.
Exactly. But they, but they even provided programs for children and stuff. That's what I see in Parks and Rec. The and I have other people who passion, love doing it, and who, and were very much into it. But I think if it's a little beyond the scope and you start paying events instead of maintaining the parks and, and creating activities. So that would fall your side for this business.
I think the long range plan is that we would hire someone who would be in charge of the Parks and Rec programs that you're talking about. We're not at that stage yet, I don't believe. So in the interim, we were trying to think of community events that would.
I love it. You know, you know, it was awesome. I'm just saying, she says, what do you think of Parks and Rec?
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I loved them, and you know, that was one of the things, when Mark and I first started meeting, I said, you know, Parks and Rec, we keep seeing, talking about this big massive project that we have this plan for and everything else, but what about the small things? And yes, the small things are important, and I think somewhere along the line, it got, oh, we can, you know, let, let's just, and, and, don't get me wrong, I think they're great things, and, and that is nice. We just have to make sure we do it the right way.
And I will say, I think we need to be, maybe not a member of the committee, but a lead for Parks and Rec. We have the face three of the Borough Park, even though they get a simple road and put a parking out there. And we have the other parks that's still being maintained and run. They will have to come to council for funding or whatever, so I do believe we need a rec and council.
Right, and Frank, are you still willing to stay one with that as the liaison?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
Liaison.
The liaison, yes. For four years, right?
For four.
No, okay, I'll take that back.
But, yeah, and then as the liaison, you're gonna make sure that we stay on the right track with making sure things are done properly. All right, should I then solicit, continue to solicit one more member for, or two more? I mean, I have one request to join at this point.
And that was another request. They were wondering if in the future we could have?
We could add more members. Yeah, that's right. That was the other request, was to add more members, because the way the code is written, it says there will be five members.
Says no more than five.
No more than five. And my thing was, they can have people involved, they just can't be voting members until we can get the code changed, because sometimes, I mean.
So seven allows for some flexibility for some meetings within the guise of the Sunshine Law. The other thing is that we have, we have a lot of very active citizens here that wanna get involved. And, you know, one or two members of the committee can form an ad hoc committee to, to plan a special event, and it doesn't involve the full committee, as long as that information comes back and any decision is voted on as a recommendation and then brought forward to council for a final decision. So there are ways that we can do this, staying fully within the law, but still, you know, tapping into the energy that is Columbia. And we have a lot of people here who love getting involved and stuff, and I think that's a great way to get more people involved in the community.
I say move forward. I wouldn't wanna quash the enthusiasm. The three members we have now, we're running out of time. Winter's almost over. People are gonna want to do things. They have momentum. I say let them lose.
Just to be clear, some of us in this room do actually like snow, so we're not, not really.
Yeah.
Got your back. One more good one, and done.
All right, we'll keep, put that in my announcements, that we're still looking for people for questions.
Move forward and fill the board, and then we'll work on getting those text changes to that section of the code.
Yep. All right. Presentation and acceptance of the reports, community development, anything else?
Very important, yeah.
Finance, nothing for me. Legislation, nothing. Sort of been fired of, but on that, as we were discovering the things with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, we realized that Akun does not incorporate anything about the Borough Park Committee, and that's listed on our website and everything as one of our boards. So we are going to have to look at changing legislation to get that updated, and we're gonna have to make sure that we define that for the code and make sure that the code matches the definition of what we want it to be. Yes. It is. Personnel.
Councilperson Whitner.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Public Works and Property, councilperson Fitzgerald.
Just sharing a very quick email that we got from Charles and Kay Leader to Jay Graham, head of Public Works Department. "We appreciate the great job that you and your team have done with clearing the snow in the borough, thank you so much." And it's always nice to hear those kinds of things. Market House, I, just continue to move forward, I don't know if there's anything else you needed to add.
So, the stands are filling up, which is very exciting. There's a lot of energy and synergy building up to, to our grand opening. We are looking at a, a mid-May soft start with hopefully something on the Memorial Day weekend as a big, bigger event to announce the, the official opening of the, of the Market House. So, we'll, we'll move forward on that and get some plans together for that, but I'm excited for what's, what's coming. I think we're going to have a, a good start on this.
Safety, councilperson Linder.
Nothing.
Staff reports, Evan.
I apologize for not having a report for you this meeting. Our servers at work have been down for about a week, and just got access to email today for the, one of the first times since, yeah, it's been a while. So, I promise that I will get, get that updated and have you a report for the meeting on March 9th, so we can start with that. But certainly have been busy over the last few days, I can promise you that, so...
And Derek isn't here, Mark.
Nothing in addition for tonight, I just want to thank you guys for, for all that we're doing. There's a lot of work that's happening, there's a lot of good things. Just, just sharing a, a fun story quick, and as you all will know, my, my wife and I have been working towards purchasing a house, and we were at our closing. The real estate broker for the seller said, didn't I, didn't I hear you do something in Columbia? And I said, yeah, I'm the borough manager there, and he goes, I just love Columbia. We used to go eat here and eat here, but now we go out, we want to eat down in Columbia. You guys have great restaurants, great food, the river's gorgeous. We, we just love it there, because I, I don't know what's been changing over the last few years, but that is, that is the place to go. And I wanted to pass it on, because that's, that's what I'm hearing out there, is there, there's a lot of good, good vibes and good things happening here, and, and we're not the end-all to everything. We, we live in a great county and a great region, and there's, there's, there's a lot of good places to come and, and do things. And I'm just excited that, that Columbia's on that list of, of a great place to go and things to do here in, in Lancaster County. So, be proud of the work that you guys are doing, and I tell the staff, you know, be proud of the work they're doing, because there's, there's a lot of great things that continue to happen here, and we just want to keep moving that synergy forward and keep building this town into what it really truly can be.
All right, thank you. Upcoming meetings, we have a zoning hearing board tomorrow evening. The River Park Advisory Committee is on Thursday. In your packet, you will find the approved minutes for the complan ad hoc committee and the community commissions. Roundtable, borough council comments, councilperson Stevens.
I love it.
Councilperson Linder.
I just would like to mention, since I am the liaison for HARB, I noticed that not everyone, not all the applicants at the HARB meeting had posted the pink placard. And that is part of the public process, so that the surrounding homes and residents can know that something is going to change with that property. So, I was a little disappointed, because I, I feel like if they don't want to take the time to post it, they should also be postponed to the next month. It, it is part of the process, so I would strongly urge them to make sure that residents know that's to be posted.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilperson Kaufman. Councilperson Fitzgerald.
No, thank you.
Councilperson Linder.
Nothing, thank you.
All right. Announcement of the next meeting at 7:00 P.M. on Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. Borough council will hold a work session. I, I wanted to announce, if anyone out there is interested in...
Do they have any board vacancies?
In joining the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
What day of the week is it?
That is the...
Second Thursday.
Second Thursday.
Second Thursday of the month. I see gears turning, hmm.
We also have an opening for two alternates, one is a zoning hearing board. And this year is municipal election year. There are three seats on council up for grabs, there are seats on the school board that are up for grabs, and we also need someone to run for tax collector. So, if anyone out there has any questions on what's involved in any of those positions, talk to anyone here, any school board members, talk to Mark. We'd love to help you out with getting you on the ballot for theirs. And could I have a motion to adjourn? And a second. I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, a second by councilperson Linder, to adjourn the meeting at 9:56 P.M., all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's a wrap, folks. Where's the checks this on?